Items. We're going to move, well, two things. First of all, if there's anyone in the audience who is here for the hearing on the property at 20 Park Road, applicant are Joe and Lisa Romano, 20 Park Road, Short Hills. That matter is not being heard tonight. The matter is being carried to June 3, 2019, at 7:00 PM in this room at the municipal building on Milburn Avenue.
No further notice required?
No further notice or publication is required unless there are different or larger than notice variances required. We are going to do the minutes next and the memorializations, but before we get to the applications, we're going to discuss the 2018 annual report of the zoning board. And just so you folks understand what's going on, the state statute, the municipal land use law, requires a zoning board of adjustment to submit annually to the township committee and to the planning board, a summary of what they've done, what the board has done during the year, but more importantly, recommendations based on what we've heard over the years of changes that we recommend be considered by the planning board and the township committee. And we're a little late in that annual report this year, so we're going to be dealing with that before we get to the applications. And the applications will be heard in the order in which they appear with the exception, as I stated a minute ago, that the Romano matter at 20 Park Road is being carried to June 3. The other thing that I've got to mention to all of you, if you are here tonight seeking any D variances, those variances require five affirmative votes. As you can see, the table to my right is empty. That's because one of our alternates is seated up here. We have three regular members, I'm sorry, two regular members absent tonight, and one of our alternates is absent. We have seven voting members. Tonight, we have sixth voting members. And it's a lot harder to get five votes out of six people than it is to get five votes out of seven people. If you have a D variance tonight, I will give you the opportunity either now, or if you would like to talk to your attorney, or to whoever is representing you, you can leave this hall now, step to the rear of the building, there's a conference room back there, and you can talk about whether or not you want to proceed tonight. I will warn you, however, that if you decide not to proceed tonight, and you want a full board of seven members to vote on your D variance, if you seek an adjournment tonight, you're going off until... Definitely June, right?
Yeah, I would say the reality is you're not going to get until June 3 or June 24.
And these D variances would include floor area ratio variances?
Right.
As well as D1 variances for uses that are not permitted in the zone.
Right. And the other variances as well?
Right, and the other categories, but I think on the agenda this evening...
I think on the agenda, we only have those two.
It's floor area ratio and D1.
All right, so that's the extent to which I have announcements. I just saw two people come into the back. If you are here tonight for 20 Park Road, that matter is not being heard tonight. Okay. Other than that, the other matters on the agenda, we expect to get to and deal with tonight. Now, the minutes of March 18, have they been distributed, Eileen?
They've been circulated. I do have a few corrections that I received.
Well, let's read them into the record, please.
The first question is on page 1, line 35, the spelling of Daniel, D-A-N-I-E-L, that has been corrected.
Meaning it's D-A-N-I-A-L?
It is I-E-L. I put I-A-L.
Wait, so it's not Danny Dubinette?
No, it's not.
Okay.
The other question was on page 15, line 657, I added the variance relief that the builders were seeking, that was inadvertently left off. Page 16, line 701, Chairman Seiberg's suggestion, I put this result in a total law coverage of 3,009 square feet or 54.7 percent, where 45 is permitted, this was a reduction of, the originally sought 58.3 percent. The next is on page 17, line 754, the applicant at that time opted to remove the pool and tennis court from the current plans and indicated he would be seeking variances for saturated structure height only. And then, I didn't know, because I know they said the applicant was going to...
I don't think the pool is out.
Not the pool, just the tennis court.
Yeah, but you just read pool.
Yeah, I meant to take that out. They left that, but they weren't...
Just taking the tennis court out.
And they're going to come back another time. And the last correction was on page 18, line 768, I left the L out of Feldman. That was it.
All right, with those changes, now who was here on the 18th and is eligible to make motions and vote on the minutes?
Oh, I think everyone's names listed again, Mary, Craig, Joy. Okay, everyone that's here.
Nope.
Okay, yes, I just looked at the list.
Was Jessica here?
I don't think I was here.
No, Jessica was not here, right?
I was not here on the other end.
All right, will someone other than Jessica make a motion to accept the minutes of March 18th with those changes?
I move approval of minutes of March 18th with the changes as stated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes of March 18 have been accepted by the board. All right, now, we're going to get to the memorializations. There were initially three listed, but there was a fourth.
No, there were four listed.
There were four listed.
I took one off.
But you took one off because White Oak Road, the committee hasn't reviewed, didn't review.
Oh, you haven't even seen it yet, okay.
So you have to review that one for the next meeting.
All right, we'll review that for the next meeting. So the first one is calendar 3669-19, Eric and Perrine Keller at 79 Cedar Street. Are there any additions or further additions or corrections to that memorialization? Who's eligible to vote on that?
Everyone, with the exception of Jessica.
Will someone other than Jessica make a motion to adopt the memorializing resolution in calendar 3669?
I'll make motion to adopt calendar 3669.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mary McNabb?
Yes.
Frank Clutner?
Yes.
Joyce Siebel?
Yes.
Wolf King to first.
Yes.
Joseph Seiberg.
Yes. Next is the memorializing resolution in calendar 3677-19, Corey and Lisa Biller, that's at 13 Rowway Road, Milburn. Any additions or corrections? I think there was one that I had, but I don't know whether that's in the draft that was circulated to the board, Eileen. It's the addition of the word yard in line 78, on page three.
Let me see where it is.
Is that it? In your copy?
Oh, paragraph 7.
Page three, next to last line.
Yeah, but it's probably not next to the last. Yard, okay, into the rear yard.
Okay, let me just state that for the record. There's a sentence on page three that says, "The neighbors to the west also have a rear addition to their dwelling, which is not as steep as the applicant's proposed addition, but the neighbor's garage extends farther into their rear," insert the word, "yard." I had no other corrections. Did anyone else? All right, who's eligible here, the same people?
Mary, Craig, Joy, Wolfgang.
Will one of the four of you, if there are no additions or corrections, make a motion to adopt the Biller resolution?
I move approval of calendar 3677-19 with the correction.
Is there a second? By one of the four of you?
A second.
Mary McNabb?
Yes.
Frank Clutner?
Yes.
Joyce Siebel?
Yes.
Wolf King to first.
Yes.
All right, the last resolution is Feldman. I know that there were several corrections on this one.
I believe I've made all of them.
The Highlands Avenue?
Yep.
All those?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Now, I know I'm not eligible to vote on this. Who else is eligible?
Mary, Craig, Joy, Wolfgang.
The four of you. All right, does anyone have any additions or corrections? Will one of the four of you make a motion?
Motion to adopt calendar 3679-19, Jacob and Robin Feldman.
Second.
Mary McNabb?
Yes.
Frank Clutner?
Yes.
Joyce Siebel?
Yes.
Wolf King to first.
Yes.
Okay, I think that does it for the resolutions now, folks. I think we should turn our attention to the annual report. First of all, will you pass this down, look back to our secretary? Now, the annual report has been circulated, there are two, actually three, changes in the annual report that are proposed. You want to read yours?
Yes, so, in the paragraph dealing with the prohibition on fences in front yards, we would like to change one of the lines in there, so it would read, in part, the paragraph would read, "The township zoning officer has stated that she will interpret ordinance 2517-18 to mean that temporary fences are permitted only during construction activity. However, the zoning board of adjustment encourages the township committee to adopt an ordinance expressly prohibiting 'plastic, mesh, or any other type of temporary,' in quotations, fence, in front yards unless there is an active construction, unless there is active construction taking place on the property that requires this type of fence."
And that's one of the changes in the drafts that you have. There are also some paragraphs that are recommended to be included. Let me read those into the record. The first was authored by Mary McNabb. There are two paragraphs, and I'll read them. "The board has taken notice of building activity in the South Mountain R6 zone area of the township that fails to reflect the spatial homogeneity of land uses and land development problems..."
Patterns.
Patterns, I'm sorry, "that have defined the character of the South Mountain neighborhood. This activity is concerning, as it is similar to the new construction in the Washington section of the township that resulted in adjustments to the development regulation ordinance by the township committee. Therefore, the board recommends that the township committee engage a professional planner to guide government policy in the adjustment of building requirements regarding allowable building area, building height, and required setbacks in the South Mountain R6 zone area to secure orderly development consistent with the current land use plan that will preserve the character of the South Mountain neighborhood." Any comments on those two paragraphs? Like, the last was written out by our attorney, I think, this evening?
Yes.
So, this has to do with steep slopes. And let me read it and see if you folks are amenable to including this as well. "With respect to the current steep slope ordinance, the allowable 1,000-square-foot steep slope disturbance results in a disproportionate impact on larger lots. To illustrate, the 1,000-square-foot disturbance permits a 16.6% disturbance on a 6,000-square-foot lot in the R6 district, a 6.89% disturbance on a 14,500-square-foot lot in the R5 district, a 5% disturbance on a 20,000-square-foot lot in the R4 district, R4 district, and a 3.45% disturbance on a 29,000-square-foot lot in the R3 zone. The board recommends that the planning board and township committee consider a revision that expresses the allowable disturbance as a percentage of the lot area rather than the current 1,000-square-foot, square feet that applies to all properties regardless of lot area." Now, I think, if I'm correct, that once upon a time, our ordinances did take into account differences in the different zone areas.
But it was different because what it did was, it depended upon whether the disturbance was of a certain grade.
Was of certain grade, right.
So it was like, if it was, you know...
It restricted your building coverage and lot coverage.
Yeah.
Right.
So, this, I think, is just trying to ensure that all properties are treated uniformly. And I think if they switch to, I don't care what percentage that they believe is appropriate from a planning standpoint, whether that's 10% or 5% or whatever it is, I just think it should be uniform.
Yeah, it would be uniform. All right, anybody have any suggestions on changes in that language? All right, I would like now, and I think you had the, a draft of the annual report on your desk for quite a while, the basic report, these will be additions to it. So, if you are amenable, I would entertain a motion to adopt, to pass on to the planning board and to the township committee, the 2018 annual report, as we've just amended it. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, Eileen, I'm going to, yes, I think we need a roll call.
Mary McNabb?
Yes.
Frank Clutner?
Yes.
Joyce Siebel?
Yes.
Wolf King to first.
Yes.
Jessica Seiberg?
Yes.
This will have to go to Eileen. Eileen, I would appreciate it if, after these are added, the changes made, all the final changes that we distribute for the next meeting of this board, and I guess we're not going to make it by Wednesday. If we can make it by Wednesday, distribute copies to the planning board as well.
Okay.
Thank you. I think we are now ready to handle our calendar for this evening. Are there any motions? I have given you folks an opportunity to consider the fact that we have only six voting members tonight, and there are applications on the agenda that require D variances. Are there any applications that are going to be made now for adjournments? I see nobody approaching the microphone, so that means that we're going to launch into the applications tonight and hope that we get through all of them. The first one is Mizuti Meneguazo, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, at 368 Old Short Hills Road. Did I come close to pronouncing the name?
Yes, Meneguazo. Meneguazo.
Okay.
What was English?
Let's swear, let's swear all the witnesses in.
Annabella Mizuti?
Max Meneguazo.
Timothy Classey.
Mr. Classey, since I know you're going to want to testify in this case, let's take you now to qualify you as an architect. Give us the benefit of your education background, please.
I have a degree in architecture from New Jersey Institute of Technology, and licensed in New York and New Jersey. I've been licensed, I think, since around 1990, and my license is presently in good standing. I've appeared in front of this board on numerous occasions and many other boards in the sort of tri-state area.
Your qualifications as an architect are accepted by this board?
Thank you.
So, but who's going to speak first?
I can't speak, thanks, good evening.
You need to keep your voice up, because that microphone is a...
You can pull that up a little bit.
It's really more a recording microphone than it is an amplifying microphone, so keep your voice up, please.
All right, okay, so, good evening, thanks for hearing us. We moved into town about three years, was April 2016. We bought the property at 368. We moved here, have three young kids, we go to local schools. Back in September last year, was actually September 18, there was very, very heavy rain, and our house got flooded. The garage in our house is in the basement, and you can see in the pictures that they are here, there's a driveway that goes down into the garage. Ting has a video that he can show. Because of the rain, we got water to go down into the garage and then into the basement. We got about three to four feet of water into the basement. We have some pictures showing kind of how high it went. That's typically where the kids play, so we lost everything into the basement. Within the driveway where we, the garage that we parked the car, we had two cars, we lost the two cars as well. And basically, we came here to the township, we talked about what happened, and we're giving database just to find, there was a lot of water from the rain that caused the flooding. Right now, we are in the situation that, during the winter was fine, there's not a lot of rain, but if you take last night, for example, I wake up at 4:00 in the morning, I couldn't go back to sleep. I basically was asking her, should we go down and take the cars out, because of the rain again? The cars, sometimes, you know, I park my car in the garage. We're traveling tomorrow, I'm thinking about leaving, planning to leave the cars in the driveway again, because if, I think rain is supposed to have rain on Friday, we can't control for that. So really, what we're trying to do is basically, we're going to have to rebuild the basement and just kind of bring the garage kind of upwards, so it's above the level, so we don't, we kind of sort of close the way for the water to come down. Do you want to show the video, you want to show the pictures?
I have a video.
Well, how do we?
I don't know how to do it.
No, we can't, there's no way that we can...
Unless you have some way to give that to Eileen.
To put it on something.
Well, I can give her a copy.
Yeah, you have to give me something that I can...
You can take pictures.
It has to go in the file.
Well, pictures we can take.
We can take the pictures.
We can take the picture.
Well, start with the pictures.
We can't take the video unless you have the ability to give us a copy of the video.
Well, I could email or copy the video, easily. I have it from you as an email.
Yeah.
Why, something I can put in here? So I can put it in file.
So put on a zip.
Please, put on something for me.
Yeah, put on a zip.
Like a little zip.
On a CD or a flash drive or something.
Okay. First, we have pictures, let me...
How many pictures do you have?
Yeah.
I have...
Five, I think, five or six.
Yeah. So basically, this one is the water.
We're going to mark...
Six, six photos.
Six photos.
All right, let's mark them A1 through A6 on the back of each, just A1, then the second one, A2. And let's start them circulating around, they can start down with Wolfgang here on my left.
Are you marking them, Tim?
Yes.
Okay. Just on the back for marking them?
Does that show anything?
Is that...
Oh, yeah, I see, I see.
A1 through A6.
A2.
No, that's A18.
You can send that one.
Now, just so you understand, they have to be left here for our file.
You okay?
Okay, yeah.
Well, if you need them, you know, can...
Ah, okay, it's okay.
I guess I'd like to send the video along also, I'm sorry.
Let's wait until these have made it all the way down. Were all these pictures taken in the garage?
In the day.
In the basement.
Garage, the basement.
Yeah.
In the day that happened.
But you can see the washer and dryer down there.
Yeah.
Yes. I'd also like to send around the video.
But can you play it there so that everyone can see it, or not?
Yeah, it's, all I'm going to do is hit it. You can kind of...
Tilt it up towards the board.
Mm-hmm.
That's it. It's only like nine seconds, I think.
Okay. You're going to, now you're going to...
We're going to mark that as A7, which will be whatever you've sent to Eileen, either a flash drive or CD or something.
I turned the volume down because the kids are laughing in the background at the water.
I did something.
If you want to turn the volume up, you can turn it up.
No, we don't.
It doesn't really, it didn't really have anything, it's like the kids are laughing, like, oh my God, look at the water. It's one of those things. So I guess, really, I dealt really mostly with Annabella, and I guess she was horrified, I guess would be pretty accurate. So she, one of her, I worked on one of her friend's house... house up the hill, and so she came in and we talked, and I was a little unsure about prospects of getting a variance. And I'll go through the whole thing, but then when she showed me the video, and also told me about her discussions with the engineering department downtown, that sort of, I thought maybe it was worthwhile to come and show all this to you tonight. So, I just want you to.
Yeah, I spoke with the township engineer the next day she came, right? She informed me that a lot of people from the township went there that same day. They look around the neighborhood to see where all that water is coming from, right? And then, based on all her assessment and looking at the place, she basically sent me some information here, if you want, I can share as well, of, you know, the recorded rain amounts of that day. So, it was basically a lot of rain in a very short period of time, right? So, she's talking about us being closer to the South Orange Public Works Garage, having a 1.59 inches of rain from 1:00 to 2:30 PM, right? And you can see that in the numbers here as well. So, basically, she looked at it, even my neighbor was there in the meeting with her, and she said, as her own recommendation, right, the best solution for this might be to eliminate the, that driveway that goes down, right, to avoid that water from filling the basement ever again, right? So, that's, that's where we came by, really, the solution, basically.
So, what I did is I'm on my DOA1 sheet. On the existing site, I can come in and return and go under into the road. And here's a drywall. It's at the bottom of the driveway here.
That says drain on it?
Right where the drainage. And, um, I wasn't sure the whole thing was Martha and Chris Keen downtown here. It seems like that was pumped up to a drywall that is, I actually indicated a little better on my proposal, an existing drywall. It's up by the street, and then the overflow is pumped and, or the overflow by gravity goes into a catch basin that's on the street itself. So, the thing about this condition is that the pump is working. It's just that the water quantity was so great, the pump couldn't pump it out. So, we went at this, we looked at this in terms of filling, and Martha, you know, thinks it's a great idea to fill, but Martha doesn't understand the zoning, you know, it's not her job to understand the zoning implications of filling it when she sort of makes that recommendation. But what we're proposing to do this evening is to fill that area so that the garage ends up really ungraded. It actually, from almost where the sidewalk is, it actually just took the driveway up just a little bit so that the water couldn't back into it, and came and lifted the garage up on that grade, and then added a mudroom in the rear so that we could walk into the house. So, that's how this building got bigger than a two-car garage, which would be, you know, maybe about 500 square feet. And our building is, you know, probably, normal garage for us would be 24 by 24, so 528 square feet. And then, I think this is a little smaller, because I was worried about the side yard setback, but then I added that extra 100 square feet onto the rear to make this connection to get back into the house. As part of it, I can build a little curb here, so that any water that comes down actually hits the building, hits this curb, comes, gets collected in these two catch bases that we added, and then could flow by gravity into the existing drywall, and then overflow from that drywall into the city system. So, just let Annabella sleep in there or something, you know? It was like, it was a little traumatic for her, the whole situation, but that's how we really handled it. If I go to, we're also doing some work on the thing where we're making the rear deck water, but it really has nothing to do with the application and isn't a variance that they're seeking to make. But if I go to my DOA2 sheet, we come in the existing drywall that's sitting down there in this lower area, I'm going to say about seven feet below grade, you know, at the garage elevation. It's really being removed because we wouldn't need that anymore, because the intent is to take any water that comes, let it right into the side of the building, drain, drain, and then go out to the drywall in front, and this whole area's been filled. This is really that connection to go into the, the family room. This plan is really the basement, because what happened before was, this was, what I call the media room, was the garage. It came in, the water came into the garage and then dropped down another two foot four into the basement and filled up that basement. So, if you see the water here at about three feet, the water's coming into the garage door and then dropping down. Theoretically, if it went on long enough, this water would go up to the five feet. I don't know how deep it actually got in there, though. How deep did it actually get?
Three feet.
Three feet. So, it looks to me like it's about three feet. So, the garage door kind of offered, and I think the town team may help them, the fire department.
The fire department, yeah.
The fire department's great, though. Really.
They spent three hours there just pumping the water out.
So, I come to the actual first floor of my DOA3 sheet, where you can really see now the two catch basins and this little one-foot-high wall, which is really just the dam to stop the water. We're picking the water up, coming across, and I try to go into the drywall and go into the catch basin. This area's all been filled, and if we picked it up, let's say if I said before it was 70, we picked it up at that eight feet, because I wanted to get it a little higher above there. And then we come in, we still have to go up steps to get to the first floor, because the first floor of the house is about three foot two inches above the active grade difference. So, that's how we handle this. This is what I'm talking about, that's an extra 100 square feet of, of building, of, of your building coverage. I come to the front of the house. The house was here. This is the form of line of the garage going in, and we put our new garage here as a one-story building, but tried to minimize it as much as possible. So, the roof is shedding back against the, it's a one-story building. Hence the side, this is the left side, really elevation. You can see, I pulled the garage off the front yard line. I think it's about 17 foot, two feet off the front. This house is already setback. The front yard setback's at about 58 feet now. So, I tried to pull myself right off of the front to sort of minimize it, the rear elevation without coming up the steps into the mudroom and coming into the house. Not really what we were doing here. Yeah, but the distance from the front of the building to the front face of the garage is that 17 foot two. My side yard setback that's proposed is that 6.48 feet. I was up there again today, and I made a little exhibit I'd like to just send around.
Let's mark it.
Eight, eight.
And I made enough for everyone to just keep one. Eileen may want to see it. Yeah, I'll pick every, I think it's come back. They're all the same thing. So, what happened?
Let's wait till we distribute.
So, when I look at this site, the, on the right side is, it's a plan. We have the joystick here. On the, look at the bottom. I'm going to work from the bottom with the street. We're six.
Is the street on the bottom of the?
The street is on the bottom, so.
Of this floor?
And the applicant's house is on the right.
The applicant's house on the right, the 368.
Okay.
So, the dorking area is the one-story building that we're adding. And from there to a fence that's existing on the property in, or on the neighbor's property is about nine feet, and there's a series of plantings along that fence. From that fence to the neighbor's building is another 21 feet. So, even though we're like 6.48 feet off of the property line, we're actually about 30 feet to the neighbor's house. I just wanted the board to realize it. I, I came and, the garage is very close to where this wall is. From this wall to this fence is nine feet, and from this fence to the neighbor's house, which is really a one-and-a-half story cape, is 21 feet. So, the distance from the face of the proposed garage to the face of the neighbor's house would be 30 feet. So, I'm saying it's kind of wide, sort of a good dimension. It's not like the neighbor is very close to us. The neighbor is approximately 23 feet or so off of their property line.
So, the 7.4 foot setback is to what? You're requesting a variance for a 7.4 foot setback?
Because we're required to be at 15, and we're at, the deviation is 7.4, right? It's a deviation.
No, it says your proposed setback is 7.4 feet.
From the proposed garage to the property.
So, it's not, it's not nine feet?
No, the fences into the neighbor's property by two and a half feet.
You originally, you said 6.48.
Yeah, I thought it was 6.4.
It's not 6.4.
And this, this exhibit you just gave us, A8, indicates nine feet.
No, it's nine feet from the, I tried to show the property line is pulled in, but it's nine feet from the building to the fence.
Neighbor's fence.
The neighbor's fence.
Neighbor's fence is two and a half feet onto their property.
Okay, nine feet to the neighbor's fence, which is on their property.
Yes. And then from the fence to the neighbor's house is another 21 feet. So, I think from the neighbor's house to the property line is probably about 23 and a half feet. That makes sense.
I don't know.
I added another two and a half. The fence is in, it's about two and a half feet on the neighbor's property. But all in all, it is.
But the garage is going to be 7.4 feet from the property line. What about that little wall? Is that wall there, or is that something new you're putting in?
The wall is middle, but basically, I'm going to say it's exactly at the same location as this existing retaining wall.
So, you're okay with that?
It has to be the wall.
It's only a foot off.
Okay.
To be into this, as it is, as a, this.
No, photos, not yet.
A9?
A9?
A9.
I'm just going to run through this. This is our retaining wall.
Which way are we looking?
You're facing the property, and the fence is the neighbor's, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
The neighbor's fence, the property line is probably.
Two and a half feet to the right of that?
Yes, to the right. And then, it's relatively well shrub. On further up, or further, closer to the street, you can see the shrubbery that's occurring kind of on the property line. It's really, the property line is really in about another two and a half feet.
Well, just wait, I have to ask you a question.
Yes.
On those first two photographs, is the street behind? Are we looking from the street? Are we looking toward the street?
The first photograph.
That's from Old Short Hills Road, looking towards Glen Avenue.
The street is here, where we are.
The street is ahead. I'm just looking at the curve. I took these pictures today, actually. If you can believe this, I can't remember where this is. But the, I'm standing in that little buffer area.
In other words, you're trespassing on the neighbor's property.
No, I was kind of standing right.
For the second picture.
The first, yes. The first picture I'm standing and looking at that way. The second one, I'm standing about here, looking back towards the street. But I, I mean, I guess I could have been. I did trespass on the neighbor's property because I went and measured to get to the house. This is really from the street, my photo sheet. And you can see my car actually in the driveway. Or no, their, it's my car.
My car, right?
Their car.
And then I go down to get into the garage below, and you can see that shrubbery road that I put there on the left side just beyond the car, and this one-and-a-half story cape where the front face of my garage basically aligns with the ridge of the cape. Okay? Like, I tried to push this back as far as I could.
Okay, I have a question.
Yes.
Attachment E says the side yard setback is 7.4 feet.
I agree.
But attachment F says that the side yard setback would be 6.41.
Because I think it was.
And you said it was 6.48, so.
I think it was 6.41. Let me just see.
So, that's the one?
Well, I, I think what's confusing is I measured 6.41 at the highest point, I thought. Like, I got, you can see on my DOA1 sheet.
That would be the one that we'd have to consider. Okay, so that's the other one that matters.
I don't know why, but 6.4 or 7.42 in the rear.
The line of.
That's an angle from the camera view. They're not parallel.
It's just not parallel.
Right. So, 6.4.
It's really 6.4. I mean, I guess it could be. I'm not sure the difference makes if it deals with us in terms of the garage.
Except for, what does your notice say?
7.4.
7.4. That's, that's a problem.
So, I think we have to go to 7.4 at this point. You know, because we've noticed that way. And that's my photo. I'm just trying to show you this, the trees. If I'm on the street, and actually standing on the opposite side of the street, there's that same car. There's a lot of foliage between our driveway, which is going down, and the neighbor's property. I moved up a little bit so you could see it again, and then I came kind of beyond and shot back. The, on the right side of this property, there's a huge distance between the house and the neighbor's house. I'm going to guess it's about 45 feet. Would you like me to send this around?
Unless the board's members want to see it up close, I don't.
So, you understand then, the garage, you're going to have to pull the garage back a foot at the front. It's because you're only getting variance really for 7.4 feet?
Yes.
If you get them.
Correct.
Does that, does that include your testimony? Are you open for questions now?
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to add a couple more things. It's in our four lot where the area is required to be 20,000 square feet, and this is only 15,490. But the lot width conforms, okay? It's, that really, the lot appears to be wide, and it, the front yard setback is deeper than the 40. It's about 58 feet. So, the lot is, the lot itself appears to look larger than it actually is. So, I think it can take the additional massing of the building. Plus, the building that we're adding is back about 17 feet off the front face of the building, and it's also a one-story building with its ridge back another, you know, 13 or 14 feet from the front face of the building. So, the building appears to be small in, in the scale of the street, okay? I'd like to use it relatively diminutive with respect to the. I'd like to use it relatively diminutive with respect to the existing structure to the right of it. There any questions?
I have just, I have one to start off. I always have to ask this question. You have an FAR requirement, request here for nine tenths of one percent, right?
Yes.
Have you done everything you could possibly do to get away from having that variance request?
We tried everything to make. I, I think I made the mudroom as small as I could make it. But I think it's, I think we need a mudroom to go from the garage into the house. Like that link needs to contain enough space.
And how, just for the record, what's the size of the mudroom?
I think the mudroom is about a hundred square feet. Which, and we're over in FAR by a hundred and thirty-three square feet. I also surveyed the front-facing garages. And I counted between Great Hills Road and South Orange Avenue, fourteen garages that were facing the street.
Between which street and which?
Great Hill. I went, I took that section between Great Hills and Old Short Hills or, and South Orange Avenue. Cause I figured that sort of made sense.
How many did you count?
Fourteen.
Any other board members have questions of any of these witnesses?
I have a question.
Yes.
Are all these variances propelled by the flooding issue in the garage?
Well, the side yard is, and that forces the side combined. The building coverage in FAR, yes, I'm gonna say everything is.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Is there anyone in the audience who has a question for any of the witnesses? I'll close the public portion of the meeting. All right, board members? I'll start if you'd like me to. Whether you'd like me to or not, I'll start. I am very, and I know a lot of the board members are very sensitive to FAR requests and to front-facing garage requests as well as to the side yard setbacks. I, I've been to the property. I know that the board members have as well. And I'm, although I'm normally very reluctant to take into account as far as side yard setbacks are concerned, the distance of the house next door to the side yard because that house could be demolished tomorrow and a new house built right up to the side, a side yard setback requirement. Nonetheless, I think that in this case, given the nature of the problem that the applicants are trying to address, given the fact that in fact, there is quite a distance between the proposed new garage and the house to the north, I guess. I, I think that the building coverage, um, variance is relatively proposed, variance is relatively small. And the FAR variance is relatively small. On a percentage basis, I haven't done the math, but it's, uh, it's not, it's not very significant. I would be, I would be, and the front-facing garage, I think that the most important thing that's been said in all the testimony we've heard is that that proposed garage is pushed back seventeen feet from the face of the actual house and is fifty-eight feet, according to the testimony, from Old Short Hills Road. And there is some screening available. I think for all those reasons, despite the fact that there are five variances being requested here, my inclination would be to vote for the variances in this case. Who else has something that they would like to add?
So they looked at this project and they thought, well, if you did chop off a hundred and thirty square feet, what exactly would you lose? So you'd lose your, your mudroom, but then it also makes the garage hard to access cause then you have to put a staircase in the garage. So, which would make the garage then smaller and probably not as usable. So to me, that wasn't so much an issue. So I ignore the water problem. Let's say like if this was a regular project that came in front of us and, and you know, someone said, well, I want the garage at, at on-ground level or on-grade level. I don't really see an issue with this. I think that it is, in fact, most of the points that Joe brought out, it's not really approaching on the neighbor to a, to a deficit. So I would support the project.
Anyone else, or should I ask for a motion?
Just a clarification. There is nothing gonna be, I mean, if I'm looking at this drawn correctly, the blueprint correctly, there's nothing gonna be underneath the garage. It's just gonna be all filled.
Yes.
Motion?
Motion to approve. And do you want to take the FAR secrecy?
Yes.
Okay. For the, um, FAR, I propose a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Yes.
Goi Segal?
Yes.
O'Fenster Torres?
Yes.
Esteban?
Yes.
Yes. Is there a motion on the other five variances?
I'll make a motion on the, to approve the...
I'm sorry, is there, the other four variances?
With the side yard setback being seven point four feet, which will require an adjustment in the plans.
Yes. Move to, make a motion to approve on the other four variances with the adjustment that the attorney just related.
Second.
Mary Smith?
Yes.
Ray Platter?
Yes.
O'Fenster Torres?
Yes.
Esteban?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hello?
Good evening, everyone.
That's where the witnesses placed.
Tyler Foster?
Katie Foster.
Timothy Clussy.
Mr. Clussy, let's follow the same procedure here. Why do you qualify first?
Um, I'm a, I have a degree in architecture and I'm a licensed architect in New York. And I've appeared before this board on numerous occasions and many other boards around the state.
And you were quali, you received your license when?
Um, nineteen ninety.
Your qualifications are accepted as an architect.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Catherine Foster, Katie Foster. And we, my husband and I, Tyler and I, moved here six years ago from Brooklyn onto Cape Court, which we find to be one of the loveliest neighborhoods in Melbourne. And we would like to remain in our neighborhood with our neighbors and in the Wyoming section in particular. Which is why, as of six years ago, when we moved here, my son was in kindergarten, my daughter was in preschool. And they have grown exponentially and our house has not. And we would like the opportunity to live in our house with more space for our children and a safer environment for, in the driveway situation, for both our children and our neighbor's young children. I don't really know how this goes, but I'll pass it to my husband.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I might add that it's, uh, we feel like Cape Court is a, a unique street in the town. I, I don't know if you've all been to visit. I know a few of you did come.
You can assume that the board members have been there.
Thank you. So we very much like it. We like our neighbors. Many of them have been there for not just a few years, but multiple decades. In fact, I think over half of them have probably been there for over twenty years. And then there's a few of us. Uh, there's only nine of us in total. A few families have moved in more recently, all of whom have younger children. And, uh, you know, we hope to be able to live in this unique location in, uh, close to what we think of as a great downtown area within walking distance, of course. You know, we hope to live there for many decades to come as well.
Any questions of the, those two witnesses? Anyone in the audience have any questions of those two witnesses?
Questions are coming.
Questions only now.
You can come sit in the front if you'd like.
Okay, the site is nine Cape Court. It's, um, R six zone. It's about four thousand seven hundred and sixty square feet, right? The requirement is to be six thousand in the, the R six zones. It's really a colonial revival, I guess, built in the thirties or maybe the...
Twenty twenty?
Yeah, somewhere right around there. It's a, um, I guess that whole area kind of was then, it, uh, we originally submitted plans to the zoning official back around the first of December, two thousand eighteen. And, um, they went back and looked at everything and withdrew our application around the tenth of, or it could, actually probably was in February. And, um, then resubmitted again and cut the building down a little bit so we could attempt in a way to minimize some of these variances because they were so kind of extensive in this lot, you know? It's really a unique area and lots are kind of peculiar and the street is narrow. And we tried, tried to make this building as small as we could, but still get the spaces that we were hoping to into the plan. So if I look at my DOA one sheet, I added one little piece there, which is the house that's immediately on the right. And I guess I'll mark it, I guess, when I...
A one.
And if I look at my existing segment, I have really a two-story dwelling with an enclosed porch on the front, it's sorted. And it's pretty prominent as you come up the hill because this house, as you come in off of Glen App, this house is kind of a little bit on the left, but sort of straight ahead. There's a small, um, sort of easement that's literally is straight ahead, which is access to get into the reservation. And that is about five feet wide there. And there's a little set of steps. That's actually a public easement into the reservation. It's always just been there. But all between our building setback, the easement and the neighbor's building, it's about forty feet from our existing house to the, to the one-story enclosed porch in the neighbor, in another colonial revival that's immediately on the right. That neighbor faces Cape Court. Our building is turned sort of perpendicular to Cape Court.
Wait, the neighbor's house is forty feet from...
Forty feet from our sort of side yard to side yard.
Okay.
So what we're proposing to do, and I tried to use this graphic symbol as I did this, is, look, we added the driveway in the front. And then we added a area in the basement so that I could create a two-car garage. Then we took the existing screen porch that was in place and we added a second floor on top of it. And then when I got to the rear of the building, I removed the existing detached garage that was in the rear. And I added a two-story building to the back of the site. So it's a situation where the existing garage is about three feet off the rear property line. I guess two and a half feet up this front lawn. And our proposed building is five point seven seven feet off the property. So we've actually pulled it in, but we've made it higher. You know, we added a second floor to it. Behind here is really the reservation. There's kind of nothing behind, minimal impact. You're going up a relatively steep hill back here. It's pretty intense back there, difficult to walk up. Maybe I'll just show you pictures of the site. This is a...
That's A two.
Now, look at the, my A picture. This is really me driving up the road and I took it right out of the front of the car. Here's that little, the steps that are actually on the easement that's going up. The neighbor's house is over here to the right. If I turn the camera a little bit, you can see that one-story building, that enclosed porch of the neighbors and their house beyond. If I kind of continued, made a left and sort of continued down the street, look back, the house actually is a, you know, nice-looking colonial revival. And if I continue up the driveway on the left side, which is a shared driveway with the neighbor, you can see the one-car garage and the reservation in here. I come on my basement level, you know, on my DOA twelve, I'm filling my second series because you're gonna have a bigger screen, bigger six meter. The road is here. The property line is right at that point, in about seven feet from the road line, the area where actually the curb exists. The street itself is about fifteen feet wide. From there to the front of the proposed garage is twenty foot nine. That's measured from the curb. But from the actual property line, it's thirteen point six one. So that would be, that really where that front setback comes from. The existing front yard setback is at twenty-five point nine one. And that's where that screen porch is, which is that dotted line. Cause I'm kind of removing it because I'm digging under it so that I could get the car into the garage. So what this allowed me to do was to leave the existing chimney in place that's in the house. But I dove under that existing porch and I was able to create a two-car garage forward of the building, only projecting, you know, eleven feet further into the front yard setback. Then I come up steps, I come into the existing house, which is really that box. Then I added my new addition to the rear. And you can see the existing garage, which is dotted out, being removed. So I come up, I have taken the sort of existing living room, which is only about twelve feet wide. And I added this screen porch area to it so that I could turn it into like a living, really family room. Added the fireplace. And you can see the existing front plane of the porch. And I've actually moved it back in about nine inches. So I kind of improved that a little bit at this level, even though I added this basement garage below. This area here is really a roof of the garage below. Then I come in, I left the core of the building exactly as it was, except that I added that powder room. This door really exists at the... This door really exists at this point of this kind of shared driveway there. And then I just opened up the back so I could get a kitchen, eating area and a small little sitting space. The back line of my property line is literally right there, five point seven seven feet off of the.
Can you just tell how much of the roof is exposed from the garage below?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
How much of the roof from the garage that you're recessing?
Yes. That, can we just like profile where the garage area, the roof will be exposed?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's that area.
So that'll be projecting out of the earth, out of the ground.
Or should I give you the trivia part again? I'll show you, I guess. I'll show you the reservation. I come up to the second floor. We have, the house presently is right in that area. You can see the dotted line. The bedrooms are, I'm gonna say unbelievably small, like ten by nine in size. We've added over that porch area so that I could create one, two bedrooms in that front. I left the stairway as it was, added a common bathroom for these two bedrooms and also for this bedroom, which is really remaining as it is. And then added a laundry room. We came out over that addition, which is about thirteen eight by about twenty-two feet. That's where I put the master bedroom. So we come in, we have sort of a, let's say relatively small master bedroom, thirteen four eight, fifteen feet, a closet and a bathroom in that new space. We needed to get these three additional bedrooms. And I guess I'll let really you guys speak to one.
Yeah, one of the reasons for an additional bedroom is my mother lives relatively close by, about thirty minutes away. And she often is helping with our children. However, you know, it's difficult. She can't spend the night being in third bedroom. And she actually doesn't like to drive in the evening if she's getting older, her captain speed. Her husband is dealing with an illness and going through a team of therapy. So hopefully that's a short-term problem, but either way, this would allow us to have family members visit and stay with us.
So I, so the government liked, yeah, by any means, but it was, they gave me really a four-bedroom house with these three bedrooms all sharing the one called bath. And then the master bedroom suite. If I go along to the elevations from my D O A fifteen, you can see the main element of the building. In the end, this dotted, heavy dotted line is actually the screen porch that was enclosed. So we've added this eight-foot porch towards the street as a two-story element and just combined it with the building. So I made the primary mass of the building eight foot four wider. Then when I got to the master bedroom suite up on the right side here, I dropped the gutter so that it would appear to be an added-on building or a second building. So I kind of taken the mass of the building and just made it wider so that it didn't appear to be disjointed. Trying to get to the idea where this building would appear to have always been here. That dotted line is the existing detached garage that was moved. Over here on the left is actually the garage. Like the grade is really coming, we came and we really come into the garage this way. We utilize that space underneath what was the old porch. If I come to the street side, where really what's kind of the front elevation point, we've added a four-part carriage door and we shaded that roof as we came up. And then we put a gable into it just to break the shed. These five windows are really in that living room, family room that we added to. And these two windows are in the two bedrooms. This attic space is really kind of an uninhabitable attic that is an extension of the existing attic. So if I come to the, sort of the left side elevation, there's a shared driveway coming up here. We came, we added the fireplace in, we, that would be added to the primary mass of the building. And then added the second, the two-story element. And this would be the final rear elevation view from the reservation itself. I have the previous scheme that is in here, which is not gonna bother yourselves, it's larger. We really shrunk it down. Would you, any questions about anything so far?
Questions from board members of any of these witnesses?
I have a question.
Yes.
So am I understanding the plans correctly? That there, besides that small portion of the garage that's coming out, that the entire house is all now a two-story house? There's no section that's one-story anymore?
Yes, no, that's true, that's true.
Are any of the other homes in the neighborhood full two-story houses?
So if we came through, we made that a two-story house. We dropped this gable here, you know, I dropped that down a foot and a half to make it smaller. But it's, it's really two-story.
How does that compare though to the other homes?
I guess across the street probably is all two-story.
Across the street, it is two-story throughout and larger in total size than our plans. One of the other nine houses is also two-stories. It's down in the corner. You come up our street and take a left, they had, they made an addition, I would guess, about fifteen years ago, if I remember correctly from our conversation.
So two of the nine are already two-stories?
Yeah, the other.
Excuse me.
They're, those are the ones that have been built on over the years as well. They're larger than what we see here, but they, the two, they're two, our two neighbors, direct neighbors, both have the same exact colonial, that's two stories. It's just not built on the size. So, and then there are one, two, three, four, five of the nine, or are two stories?
So the house across the street is a full two-story or it has still one-story elements to it?
Does the story Mr. Cessie worked on?
Can't hear you.
I don't know if that has any, that's a full two-story, I guess. Yeah, I'd say it's a full two-story. Across.
The garage maybe?
Cape Court. It's, it's on, it's actually on the corner of Glen Ave.
Yeah, no, wait, when you're saying across the street, which. Yeah.
We did a variance on that.
On that house here.
Right, so there's nine houses on Cape Court. Correct?
Correct.
Yes.
And of the nine houses, how many are two-stories?
Full two-story.
Full two-story.
Full two-stories, where it's, you're looking at it as an entire house.
It's not your house, the other houses.
Aside from?
Aside from what you want to do.
Five?
I think, I, I don't know. I don't know. I haven't counted them. One, I know Joanne's house, I don't know her, her house number. She has a garage that's a single story. So how would you consider, count that?
Not a full two-story, not when you're looking at the, from the streetscape, that, that you're looking at a completely two-story house.
I don't guess. If you don't know, if you don't know, just say you don't know.
Oh, okay, I don't.
We could get it.
Would you guess?
Yeah.
No, they're not sworn, they're not witnesses.
Okay.
Okay.
I have a question.
You have a question?
For me or for?
Well, if anybody, on Cape Court, are there any other houses that have a front-facing garage that is that close to the street?
Yes, our direct neighbor to the left of us, or to the right of us, but to the left if you're facing.
I think all but one, one, one of them does.
And what is the, and the distance of the garage to the street is?
A car's length.
And what would your distance be? Like the face of the garage, the front face, the front part of the garage, how much to the property line?
The neighbor's.
The neighbor or ours, I'm sorry.
No, yours, yours.
Oh, us, thirteen?
Thirteen point six one feet. We have, we have an issue with the shared driveway with the children. We have cars going up and, and back all day. And with four children, it's actually become pretty dangerous.
Maybe you could draw with the garage, so you're saying the neighbor on the, when you're looking on the left?
Yeah, our neighbor to, if we're facing our house, our neighbor.
Yeah, where's the garage? I don't remember. I can't recall it.
Neighbor to the left, to the, to the west.
The neighbor to the left, not going up the shared driveway.
They have two garages.
They have two garages and one of them is in our, sorry, sorry. That happens a lot.
How about the most, the other eight houses have, um, do most of them have rear garages or do they dual front garages? It's unusual, that's, I'm trying to.
It is unusual. I think, I think our, our, that our, our garage is situated in a different, I don't know.
Your current garage or your proposed garage?
What's that?
What's rare, the current garage or the proposed garage?
The current garage, having it in the back and the share, with the shared driveway has been problematic for safety reasons, for them as well.
We're saying that normally the garage, the driveways are relatively short and the garages are in the front of the house.
But, but if they have a, when their garage be in the back, if the driveway's shared?
If you're sharing the driveway, why would they be using the driveway if that garage isn't in the back?
They have two garages.
Two garages, but they use one in the back.
They use both.
Use both.
The majority of the houses on the street have garages in the front of the house. Our immediate neighbor with the shared driveway has one in the back and our neighbor on the other side has one in the back. There may be one other, which are the, our neighbors here, Frank and Margaret. I don't know how they would describe theirs. They're at the end of the street where they happen to have additional parking, whether part of the property, part of Cape Court or part of the reservation, I'm not sure. But I know I'm jealous of the extra space they have.
Are you removing any portion of your existing driveway?
Yeah, that's what I was, that was gonna be my question.
We added because this driveway is really an easement for the neighbor's property.
But what about that portion of it that goes to your, to the garage that you're eliminating?
Yeah, we don't need that portion of it up here.
Don't stand in front of the drive.
No, no, we, we could, yes.
Like it could come back straight.
We could remove that.
Yeah, there wouldn't be a purpose for it.
That, yeah, we don't need that.
Well, let me ask you this, because why are you not using the garage now?
We, we, I mean, we use it as much as we can, but it, as we're backing up and the, we go up and back in the driveway, it's a shared driveway and they have younger children and I have two children of my own. So we have four children jumping in and out of a driveway with how many cars backing down? It's actually become a dangerous situation.
I don't think you could fit a car in the garage.
It's, it's small and the people who sold it to us were, maybe painted it in a different light, shall I say? So when we arrived at the situation from Brooklyn, we really can't put our car in, in that garage.
There's been water damage to the garage. It was built, it was small. It was built in nineteen twenty-eight like a house, tilted.
We do, yeah.
Have you, you park in the garage?
We park next to the garage.
Any other questions from board members?
So eliminating that portion of, a small portion of the driveway in the rear is going to presumably.
To increase your lock.
Increase the rear yard unoccupied somewhat.
It might, and it might reduce the lot coverage a little bit. Are there any other, are there any other questions from board members?
Is it a, is a, the proposed garage is a one-car garage or a two-car garage?
It's, it's like a car and a half. It's not really wide enough to, you could fit two cars in, but you'd have trouble getting out of the doors. It's, but I mean, we wanted to make it sort of in scale to the building. So the whole building's only twenty-one feet wide, so this garage is really twenty feet wide. So the block walls are eighteen feet wide. It's sort of like a, the forties garages with the one-car garage door, right, with that sixteen-foot garage door, the fourteen-foot door. Like you could fit two cars into it, but probably, you probably wouldn't do that.
Is there anyone in the audience who has questions, only questions at this point, no comments? Come forward, give your name and address at the microphone.
It's a short question.
That's all right. Give your name and address at the microphone.
My name is Frank Meyer. I'm here with my wife, Margaret Meyer. We live at seven Cape Court. I simply have a question. I thought the plans involved a two-car garage. You're now saying it's a one-car garage. Is there gonna be room for the other car in the driveway area in front of the garage? Or are they still gonna have to keep one car on Cape Court? That's my question.
The, there's room forward of the garage to fit a car. There's room between the road and the garage to fit a car. So it's fine for that. If they wanted to, they could put.
Yeah, well, our car.
Around it, yeah. Yeah, yeah, you could. You'd put it over to the side.
Wait, only one person can speak at a time.
Come to the microphone, please. Questions only now.
You touched on a, on an important point, and that is that Cape Court is a narrow street. It's a private road. And the parking of cars on Cape Court creates problems. What I like about this.
What's your question?
You know, I forgot.
You'll have an opportunity to speak.
Why don't you remind me? What was the question?
Could I park a car between?
Yeah, that's my question. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Yes. Will it permit both of their cars to be off of Cape Court?
Yes.
That's my question.
Yes, there is.
Is there, are there any, is there anyone in the audience, anyone else in the audience with a question for either of these witnesses, any of these three witnesses? Anything more, Mr. Cessie?
I don't think, not at this time.
There was one other thing.
Come to the microphone.
I believe this is relevant. My apologies if it's not. But the former owners also had put in a considerable amount of concrete in the front, which I, I think that's relevant for permeable surfaces. So we intend to remove that. They had sort of a dog, dog run and then also traditional sidewalk like you'd find in front of a storefront. So again, I don't know if that helps, but I, we talked about the driveway, removing that in the back. We'll do the same type of thing in the front yard.
All right, but when you talk about the front, you're talking about the front of your home, which is on the side yard of the property, correct?
Yes, it's not on the street side.
So when we see it on the plan, it all says concrete, concrete. And it looks like it's leading up to the house. On the right, on the right side of, on the easterly side of the, side of the dwelling. Is that the concrete that you're talking about removing?
Yeah.
To the front door.
Yeah, mhm, yes.
It's just like we have concrete over here.
Yes.
This wall could actually be smaller.
Right, yes.
Okay.
The concrete is actually not on their property though.
That beginning, this, this length of this concrete is not on their property. That's a none easement.
That is it. First of all, it's not a concrete.
But the one that goes to the house.
It's not concrete. I was there. It's not concrete.
What is it?
Excuse me. I just wanna make sure.
Slate, slate, it's individual slate.
Yeah, I'd like to be clear. What I was talking about is not the easement. The easement is blue slate stone.
I know what you're talking about.
Oh, okay.
It's in front of the doorway to the house.
Yeah, from my, our front door to the mailbox, from our front door to the porch.
You're gonna leave a sidewalk there?
Whatever you think is best, but I.
No, it's not a question of what I think is best. I'm not the witness.
My intention was to have stepping stones through the grass, but frankly, we haven't gotten to that point.
Okay.
But I mean, whatever he does, it's still gonna be part of lot coverage. It might reduce it.
Yes, it would reduce.
Might reduce it by a few feet.
I could reduce it.
I could reduce it.
It'll be two square feet and a half. Touching from what I'm hearing. That, that's what he's really saying.
All right, I'm gonna ask now if there's anyone in, in the audience who would like to make a statement on this case. You, now you must come forward.
I would like to ask a question beforehand.
Another question? Come, come forward. Come forward.
There has been a problem.
No, wait till you get to the microphone.
Absolutely.
There's been a problem, uh, really of recent duration where there's been a tremendous amount of water coming down from their house. Uh, I'm not sure if it's the, and I'm wondering if your proposal here is doing anything to deal with or correct that. Because there's a whole wash of water that comes down, um, from, I guess from the reservation that comes down. Uh, it may have been something that the former owners had created more of a problem with. As, as, as you so accurately described. But I'm wondering what might be done to correct that water problem, as long as you're doing the work, what can be done to solve it? Because right now it's sort of unseemly.
All right, you've answered a question. Let him answer.
Why don't you just stay here, cause if you wanna make a statement, you'll be up close.
If you wanted a comment.
Oh, I'll wait, maybe I'll add something to it.
Okay.
Yeah.
The, um, as part of our work, we have to conform to the engineering requirements for the site. So we would contain all of our water into a dry well and.
Your outside water.
Yes, and if, if there's water that's, I guess, coming through our site, we would control that water at that point also. I guess the water is coming through the site. I'd have to really look at it, see what's going on. Yeah, but we can control it.
That's not before the board at this moment anyway. Okay, is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a statement? If you have to, to make a statement, you have to give your name.
Oh, sure.
And address and be sworn.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Yes. Franklin N. Meyer, seven Cape Court, Millburn, New Jersey. Uh, we like this plan, okay? My wife and I think it's, it's a plan that would improve the house and we're in favor of it. The only problem we have and the only concern we have is that Cape Court is a very narrow street. And I had spoken actually to Tyler about perhaps the possibility of having some agreement that access in terms of workmen and supplies be done certain times of the day, like for example, before eight o'clock in the morning. Because if there's gonna be construction people with their trucks in front of their house, that means we can't get out and our other two neighbors can't get out. You understand, this is a narrow street. And it's a narrow street.
We've all been there.
Okay, and so, and when you've got a piece of construction equipment up there, forget about it. Now, when the, uh, application of, um, of Mrs. Gould was before the board, this was, uh, they had added something, it was, they, um, we raised this issue. And as part of the approval, uh, there was a provision that all of the supplies and all of the construction would be done from Glen Avenue. Now, that's not possible in this case. But we're asking that there be a provision to protect the other residents on Cape Court. We think it's a great project. We simply don't wanna be locked in while this thing is going on. And we ask that, um, a provision be put in that, um, construction vehicles will make their deliveries and will be on Cape Court prior to eight o'clock in the morning or something like that. And that would solve a problem.
That's a problem because the township ordinance doesn't allow them to start work before a specific time. Eight o'clock.
All right, well then, how about eight thirty? Or, because our neighbor is a teacher and she has to get out.
But then what you're saying is you can only, you're looking for the construction vehicles to only be there for thirty minutes from eight to eight thirty.
Is it not possible to have the construction or it's, township ordinance does not permit the unloading of anything before eight o'clock in the morning?
I don't know.
Well, but, you know, my experience with contractors is they come in, they have their truck, they have to go out, they have to get tools, they have to get, you know, equipment. He's talking about parking vehicles.
The only time they have to park right in front of the premises would be as if it's heavy stuff. The other stuff, if they need a, you know, a tool or something, they can park on Glen Avenue. That's not a problem, okay? But in terms of locking Cape Court, we simply ask that there be a time provision so that the project can go ahead, but uh, the neighbors are not present, that's it.
I, I'm not sure how this goes, our direct neighbors to the left wrote a letter on our behalf, but they are away for the spring.
So we can't consider the letter.
Can't consider the letter.
Oh, okay, uh, all right.
Thank you.
No, thank you, and in favor of it.
We didn't hear that.
I'm sure that the, um, we could make an agreement that the construction parking is occurring on the common driveway. Cause I'm sure we could work this out, this all.
All right, any other comments from the audience? Come forward. Give your name and address and be sworn, please.
Raise your hand. Raise your hand, you swear from testimony, you signed the two hundred two hundred.
Yes. Margaret Meyer, seven Cape Court. Uh, it just occurred to me as I'm sitting there that perhaps what they could do in terms of construction vehicles, that area that's in front of their house where they proposed to have, you know, the new garage area is now like yard. Maybe those vehicles could park on there rather than on Cape Court itself.
That's true, yeah, we could cut that area first.
Mhm, and that plus then you have the driveway.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
And, and I, and I like to say, Mr. Clessy did a great job, we love his plans, I couldn't imagine anybody making better plans for this house. I don't know how we did it and, and the Fosters are great neighbors, we'd hate to lose them. We'd like to see them be there for many decades, as my husband and I have been there for several decades.
Thank you.
I hope we can work something out.
Anyone else in the audience have any comment to make? I'll close the public portion of the meeting. Board members? I'll go first if nobody else wants to. Um, I cannot, and I'm not a hundred percent sure of this, but I, I think that I cannot remember a case with nine variances being requested. And the key variance is the FAR variance where there is a, this is really a, a massive variance being requested. Now, years ago, there was a man who sat on this board and he was very wise and I listened very carefully to him. And he told me that you have to look at the extent to which there is a variance being requested, not just in, in terms of the number of percentages or feet, but the degree to which there is a requested deviation from the standard. The standard in this district, the R five district is an, is an FAR of thirty-six percent. The request here is forty-eight percent. That's a third larger than is permitted in the district. Put aside the fact, and I'm even ignoring the fact that there are a couple of variances that relate to the rear yard, which in this instance, I think probably is, uh, the, uh, the municipal ordinance, zoning ordinance, does not really protect anyone because there is no one in the rear except the reservation. But, um, we have, uh, as I indicated a minute ago, a very significant FAR variance. We have a somewhat significant, um, lot coverage variance. We have a building coverage variance. These, uh, standards are in place for a reason. And the reason is to control density of use. Now, there's not anybody sitting at this table who's not aware of this particular area of town, this particular street. It's a very sensitive area, uh, and, uh, kind of a jewel in this town. And I, in, in my judgment, this project far exceeds, uh, what, um, uh, the township had in mind for, uh, the Cape Court, uh, area. I think that, um, we have to also remember that we sit as a board involved in zoning and land use issues, not in personal issues. So the fact that people like the neighborhood, they don't wanna move, they've maybe outgrown the house, but they don't wanna move to another area of town. It's inconvenient, it's expensive, whatever the reasons are, those are not issues that we are entitled to deal with. Uh, we are here as a land use board dealing with zoning and planning issues. That's our function. And I, for one, am not going to vote for the FAR if we vote on that first. Uh, and, uh, so with a limited number of people sitting here, uh, tonight, the FAR vote will have to be unanimous from the rest of you. I'm not gonna vote for it.
I'll try to give a counter opinion.
Go ahead, Mike.
I'll try to give a counter opinion.
Go ahead.
We have a lot, um, that is twenty-two percent smaller than what is normally, um, required in the zone. We have a house that's basically twelve hundred square feet of living space with a garage, which is included as part of the FAR, um, that's already exceeding, the existing usage is already exceeding the maximum allowed for the zone. So we're thirty-six point four ready with a thirty-six allowed. Um, basically saying no matter what you do to this house, you're just gonna boost the FAR up and up and up. Um, I don't think that what's being done here is egregious by any means. Uh, I was looking at the size of this house, the size of the expansion, I mean, it's very modest. And no matter what you do, even though you're eliminating the garage and adding some space on the back, the garage gets tucked underneath, uh, there is no way you could not blow this FAR out of proportion on this lot. It's five hundred and seventy-four square feet, which in terms of square footage is rather insignificant. But when, to me, but when you look at the lot size being only forty-seven hundred feet, it, it just, it's like I said, it just exponentially grows, uh, with this, with this lot. I don't see how you're gonna be able to shrink it down and make it a viable project. Uh, there's no easy way to shave a hundred square feet off or two hundred square feet off to make it work. So say, just strictly looking at the numbers, I don't see how you could do any improvement to this piece of property. You are locked in, in and of itself a hardship to do anything if you don't wanna violate the FAR. You're already in violation of the FAR right now.
All right, let me respond this way by saying, I've heard that argument made a thousand times before this board that the lot size is smaller than required in the district. That doesn't mean that you can load up the lot.
Oh, no.
With, with improvements.
No, but I'm merely saying you're already over FAR now.
I, I understand that.
What if we, what if we took a little bit of a different angle? What if we looked at it that, I mean, I'm, I'm, when I'm thinking about it, I'm thinking there's a couple of issues which are, forget about expansion issues, there are some safety issues that are, that seem to me to be important. The number, the first being the driveway, the second being, you know, the garage and keeping cars off the street. I mean, so if you maintain those, can't you then on the first floor, you'll have a full expansion of the first floor encompassing the old garage? But then not extending the second floor up above, over the, o- over the porch area? So you'd be, you'd be, uh, saving some square footage off that right there.
There might be other ways that this could be handled, I don't know.
I'm sure that at least from the street, the street front, you wouldn't. Remember, at best case, you could nip and tuck, okay? You will never eliminate the FAR.
That's true.
It's just a matter of what you find tolerable.
I, I, oh, sorry, I, I agree, um, that, that no matter what, this FAR is gonna go up if you wanna make any improvements on the house. What I'm concerned about, I'm kind of in between the two of you, is that being there earlier today, seeing the other houses on the street, I think the massing of this house, even if it's not adding on that much square footage, I, I think it's gonna ruin the, the streetscape, I think it's just going to look too big. And I agree with you, Craig, that it's really not, in, in the grand scheme of things, adding on an enormous ridiculous amount of square footage. I, I just, I, I look at the, you know, the final plans of what this house is gonna look like and I'm worried that this is gonna be one of those applications that we say yes to and the house gets built and it's just gonna look too big on the street. That's really what concerns me is the overall, you know, massing of this house. I just, I worry that it's gonna, this is, and I have no doubt that the applicants are trying to build a house that fits into the neighborhood and that they know how special the neighborhood is, but I'm just worried that I would be making a mistake by approving the application as it is right now. I'm worried it just is gonna look too big.
Well, also, I'm sorry.
I, I wanted to just say in agreement with Jessica that when I was there, my impression is that if you brought the house further than the existing one-story enclosed porch, it would make Cape Court seem so narrow. It just felt, that would just be for me, just lose the entire character, which is really lovely. I actually thought that the space that you have to the right was generous. But the idea of moving forward and then putting a garage right on the street to me is, is actually offensive. I think it would really ruin the lot.
Actually, putting the, doing the second floor above the, the porch area in the front, that actually brings the whole facade closer than the house, which is just to the left. The house just to the left does have a garage.
But there's also another garage they're proposing, something like that.
I understand, but, but it has, the, the house next to it, to the left of it, does have that front garage, which I think looks nice and I can see the reasons for it. And it's also a two-story, if I, two-story if I recall from the front facade, but it's set back, further back than that front porch is.
Yeah.
So I'm.
I mean, I would have liked to see a section of the street, I just think that street's gonna feel so narrow, that's a problem.
Anyone else?
I agree with my colleagues, I think, I, I mean, I understand what Craig is saying.
Yeah.
Me too, but I think that it's just the massing is an issue, which needs. I wish there was a way to improve it without.
I mean, the house sits, you know, the way it's, sits on the lot, yeah, I mean, it's very hard to add this way.
Well, it's not possible.
No.
If that, that's what I would think, there would be the only viable way to add to the side.
Even if this were, the, even if the lot were the required size, it would still be over by two percentage points on FAR. Well, if you did nothing, you're over by. If you did nothing, you're over point four right now.
You're already over.
You're over right now.
The FAR's gonna always be over.
Yeah, and that's exactly, and I don't think that's what we're saying, that's not, exactly, and what it looks like when it actually gets. Exactly, when it gets constructed, if we approve it, um, as it's currently, you know, in, in its current form.
Mr. Clessy?
Yes.
Do you want us to go forward on a vote on this?
No, we'd like to take all of your input and, um, take a look at everything again and come back if that's okay.
I agree.
I do have one thing to say though. If this was like an R seven zone, which is really more of what these lots are, that I sort of want maybe everyone to just think about, and I'll come back with some more information related to this, if it was an R seven zone, where the FAR would be allowed to be forty-five percent.
But it's R six.
Right, but I'm just saying that it's, we're more at that sort of size in terms of our. in terms of our lot here, not in R6.
Okay, this is not the time to make an argument. You want a new date?
Please.
Eileen?
We need 10 days.
What do we have on...
June 3rd, June 3rd.
June 3rd. All right, I'm going to make an announcement now that calendar 3673-19, Katie and Tyler Foster, 9 Cape Court, will be carried to June 3.
I suppose.
2019, 7:00 PM, in this room, at the municipal vote.
Thank you so much for your time tonight. I appreciate it.
As for the notices,
No notice.
No further notice will be required unless you...
Unless you have new...
Add new variances.
New variance.
Or increase the extent of deviation on the existing variances.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Next case is Yair Vendori.
I do.
Danny, is that your client in the back?
It is not, this is a neighbor.
Power of attorney? Oh, okay, okay.
Uh, the neighbor, you want to come up? This is the gentleman lives immediately to the right of, of the subject property. Okay.
Wait, do you have to introduce the armin?
Yes.
So you need to give us your credentials.
Okay. Licensed architect since 2001 in the state of New Jersey. I attended Syracuse University and then a master's degree at NJIT in Newark in 1995. My license is current and in good standing. I appear before this board and other boards in the county. And...
Your qualifications as an expert in architecture are admitted.
And just for the record, as Eileen was talking about, Mr. Dubinay is appearing under power of attorney from the applicant, which I have reviewed and approved.
Thank you. This project is located at 68 Myrtle in Melbourne. It's in the R6 zone. What we're planning to do is, is quite interesting. We are going to transform this property in, I believe, a very positive way. The goal is to build a second story on top of the existing, it's some sort of cape. It's like a half a cape, which is typical of a lot of the homes on that side of the street on Myrtle. So the goal is to add a second floor, to of course create additional bedrooms and bathrooms, and to create an addition in the rear of the home. One of the clever components of this project is currently the house has a single front-facing attached, or attached to the house garage. You actually can't get the garage into the house. But one of the ideas is that we remove the front-facing, single-car garage, and we create a driveway that takes you to the back of the house. And under the addition, because of the grade, we'll create a two-car garage under our proposed addition in the rear. By a lot of, some of the effects of this project, we're going to be eliminating three existing non-conformities that exist. By removing the garage, right now the garage, the existing garage is 7.2 feet from the property line, so we'll create a 17-foot side yard setback facing the house to the left. We'll also take an existing non-conforming combined side yard setback and make it conforming by over three feet. So there was a, of course, having a two-car garage is a plus, and also now eliminating those two variances. There's also a, a side entry, wood steps, an accessory structure to the right that's going to be eliminated, so we eliminate that variance. Through the design of the second floor, what we did was we lowered the roofline, the plates, to 6'8" and created a hip roof, as opposed to what it currently exists, which is a gable roof. So the gable currently that faces the adjacent neighbor is 26 feet tall. As a result of the design that's in front of you, we'll bring it down to 20 feet. So there's a lessening of the side-to-height issue. So the three variances that we need are, front yard setback. The existing house is at 25.2 feet, and we're seeking to go on top of that, so it's existing non-conforming, where 40 feet is required. But we did a study of all the homes on the street. The average front yard setback is 23.9 feet. We are increasing what's existing by about seven inches, and that was just a bay window, which is not very important, but I thought aesthetically we gave a little dimension. So for all intents and purposes, we're, we're building on top of what's existing on the front yard setback. And you can see on the plans or the site plan, there's a very shaded area, dark shaded area, that's the front yard setback. So the variance is 15.35 feet needed for the, to allow us to build on top of the existing house. But it's in with keeping with the other homes on the street in terms of the front yard setback. Second variance needed, the side yard setback, required is eight feet. Proposed is 7.4, and existing is 7.4, so there's no change. We could pull the second floor in six inches to avoid that variance. Aesthetically, I think it'd be better to, to keep it in line. Certainly by moving in six inches, we won't increase necessarily anybody's open airspace and light as a result of it. I think the big change is to change it to this hip roof as opposed to the gable. And the third variance we need is something that we call side-to-height. So based on the height, we have to be 8.64 feet away from the property line, and if we maintain the existing 7.4 feet, it's a 1.24 foot violation. So those are the three variances that are associated with this application. All three of them are existing non-conforming. They exist today. And the third one, which I talked about, side-to-height, I'm actually going to lessen it. Based on the height that exists today, you'd have to be back at 10 feet from the side yard. So we're, although it seems like we're adding the second floor, because we're getting, removing the peak on the roof, we've lasted the impact to the side-to-height. So there's a lot of positive aspects of allowing this. There's no building coverage variance, no FAR variance needed. They all relate to front yard setback and the, on the side yard setbacks. I had an opportunity to speak to the neighbor, and if I may, I'd like to introduce a small change, which I thought was fantastic. You know, when sometimes when you work in a...
Does it affect any of the variances?
Yes, side-to-height. If I eliminate the dormer on the right side of our home, adjacent to our neighbor, we'll eliminate side-to-height, we'll be at 18 feet tall. And there's really no need for it. The window could be set a little bit lower in the roof.
You're talking about the third variance you've listed?
Yes.
So you're withdrawing your request?
So you eliminate that variance completely?
Yes.
You're withdrawing your request for that variance?
Yes.
So you're, you're left with the front yard setback variance, and you've given us the, a chart of the other homes on the street. Is that correct?
Yes, it shows you the established, the front yard setbacks. Another change that we've made, that I'd like to put on the record for the neighbor, is, and I think he's right, that the way the original design was, if you look at the front of the house, we did, you know, a peak, and then we brought the peak all the way down to the front door. It looks very tutery, and we tried to create this bay window that was two stories. And one of his comments was he didn't want it to look too tall. So I think if we, it's just, this is purely aesthetics, has nothing to do with the variances. But again, since front yard setback is, is one of the variance, not height, if we eliminate the peak, we just...
What are you, which drawing are you looking at?
Sorry. It's on V1, the second page, the front elevation is... I guess I'd like to go on record, just to, to go over some of the minor design changes, which I think will make the house look less tall from the streetscape, is if we eliminate the front peak, which is purely aesthetics, and we continue the gutter line even around the house. That could, and we eliminate the design element of the two-story windows.
Okay, but that's, as you point out, that just got nothing to do with the variance.
Nothing to do with the variance, but I think, you know, we want to, you know...
You just want to put it on the record?
Yes.
So the, the neighbor can hold you to it.
One, one last change, which I think is valuable, doesn't affect the design, may even be better. Instead of a 12-on-14 roof pitch, which is steep, we're going to do 12-on-12, which will lower the building height. Instead of going to 32, we'll be at 31 feet.
Are you putting the neighbor on your staff?
So, so the additional, the additional side-to-height, where is that coming from? I don't know where you're doing that.
Okay, it's a little bump in the roof line. If you look at drawing number two on V1, which says right side elevation, it's the top...
Wait, drawing number two on V1.
Okay, so our, our height was derived from grade to the top, to the gutter line at that dormer. It's a little...
What page are you on, Dan?
So it'd be 1V1, called right side elevation?
Wait, 1V1?
So it's 2 of 2?
2 of 2, yeah.
The upper left-hand...
Oh, it's sheet 2?
Yeah.
It's sheet 2?
So why, how is it?
That's where I calculate my side-to-height.
You understand, because when we do this side height, so how do you show that?
I'm not...
If it's approaching on the side, then you're not going to see it because you're looking on the side. And so we're looking from the front, that's where it's coming, that's where we measure it to. So where is it, if I look at the front?
If I look at the front elevation on, well, first of all, both sheets are called V1.
Yes.
And one is 2, one of 2.
So 2 of 2 should actually be V2.
Yeah.
So if I'm looking at the front elevation on V2...
The dormer that I, I want to eliminate is this teeny little kick out of the roof. If you look at the, your roof...
It's called the gutter line.
Gutter line. It was an idea to make, to set the window like, because we lowered the plates in the room to be 6'8", and the window, the top of the window is usually 6'8", so we created a bump in the roof line to allow the window, but no reason the window can't be lower in the room, which will...
Okay, I got it.
Gotcha.
Is it something I can mark on my plan to see what you're talking about?
Yeah, see, so...
This, is it this little thing here? Which side is it on, this little thing? This little thing? That's going away? Okay.
All right, so Eileen, do you agree that he no longer needs the second variance? The third variance that he's listed? Is that correct?
Yeah. The other ones do it with the...
Right, so whatever changes he's doing, he can reflect on as revised plans, but the only change that the board cares about...
You're asking for a 0.6 of 1 foot side yard setback variance and the front yard setback variance as well.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Is there anyone in the audience who has any questions or comments on this case? I see none, I hear none. Close the public portion of the meeting. Oh, then come forward.
I saw you asking for questions.
No, 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 questions or comments.
Yes, I do.
Name, name?
Yeah. Ren, R-E-N, Pan, P-A-N. I, I'm the owner of 72 Myrtle Avenue, which is to the immediate right.
To the immediate right as you're facing this property?
Yes.
Okay, and your comment is?
My comment is, our, our neighborhood always have been modest homes. It's one and a half stories, Cape Court, and, you know, and it's a very much a child-friendly neighborhood, and we love it very, very much. And my wife and I have raised three children, and Wyoming school is right, like, two houses away. And recently, we saw one house, which was 74, went up, and really, we got so alarmed, because it looks like a hunchback of Notre Dame. You know, so a huge back and occupying almost the whole backyard. And obviously, its height is also blocking light. I, my house was like a, one house away from that big monster, and I don't want a second one coming up to destroy our neighborhood character, which is modest homes, modest family, and we can walk on the street, you know. My concern obviously is with the front setback, the first variance. I, obviously, I don't want to look it out of character. Okay, we, we have modest homes in the front. It's always like a one and a half stories with a dormer, which is, you know, very quaint. And I don't want to look it's a huge imposing front facade. So that's my concern. Obviously, I had very nice conversations with, with this architect, and I made some suggestions, and he was very receptive to my suggestions too. I just want to make sure it's going to be at least less impact on our neighborhood. And also, this second variance, which is the right side, if you are facing the house, which is also my side of the house, and it was very narrow. If you look at it, you should have a, have a picture, so that, right? And I have a chain-linked fence. And if they even sort of expanded like as they requested, there's no walkway anymore on their side. It's going to be very, very close, especially with the height. My house is going to be dwarfed by this one. It's, it's very unsightly. And obviously, I had conversations and is it going to make it, the roof is going to lower the roof or make, make the slope on, on the side? And, which is good, I, in my view, but I still, I'm concerned with the whole neighborhood. The one after another is going to be investors swarming in, and it's going to be a trend that's going to destroy the whole neighborhood character. That's my concern.
Well, my only response to that is, we can only rule on what comes before us. And today, two variances came before us. One of them, this front yard setback variance, I think everyone on this board who visited the neighborhood saw that all of the houses are pretty much lined up in a, in a, pretty much in a row, and much closer to the street than the ordinance provides. So I think that I'm speaking for myself at least, that front yard setback variance did not pose a problem to me. The other one is a 6, 5 and 1/2 inch side yard setback variance that I didn't see as significant. But we'll find out when I close the public portion, how everybody else on the board feels about that. In terms of the design features, that's beyond our control.
That's understood.
And we... We function within a set of rules that are set by, set forth by the township committee.
Yes, that's perfectly... Yes, that's perfectly understood. I, I'm only concerned about my side. It's already very close to each other. I don't want something going up, covering like, now, this is the picture. This is my, my house.
So Danny, is that your picture?
Yes, we can mark it to exhibit.
Yes, A1.
I just want to show it's very close, especially with the fence. Once they expand, I believe it's like about 1 foot, then, then nobody can walk, obviously, on their side.
Why don't you pass it to Ms. McNabb, and we can pass it around.
Well, Dan, let me ask the question that I know is on everybody's mind. We saw .6 tenths of 1 foot as the requested variance.
Yes.
On the side yard setback. Will that indeed, that's what, something like maybe 7 inches?
7.
Around 7 inches. Is that going to affect, in your view, the access on that side of the property?
No, because it'll be, it's already at 7.4 feet off the property line, so if we extend the second floor, it doesn't, the width is the same. And I believe we, we spoke about it. I believe that if I go 7 inches, it's enough to make it look like a mistake and look ugly and no, and provide no benefit in terms of air and open space. I think the benefit that we did was push the addition well within the, you're allowed an 8-foot setback. We pushed it to 11 feet, the new part. I had the opportunity to measure the distance from our property fence to your garage. It's 7 feet, and he has a 10-foot wide garage. So I certainly, there, I didn't feel like there was any negative impact to open airspace and tightness.
So your, your proposal is that that side of the, of the property, of the, of the house?
Yeah.
Will be 7 inches closer to the property line?
No, it goes straight up.
Straight up.
So there is no difference. And actually, that's a great picture to see, because that peak of the roof goes up 26 feet. Our gutter line will be at 18 feet, so we've lowered it 8 feet, and then the roof kicks back, so it'll actually open up light near. So that's actually a good picture.
As opposed to today?
Today. And if you were to take side to height on that one, you'd have to go kick the side yard setback back 10 feet. So I think it's oddly a benefit to the neighborhood properties.
Well, so you are going to remove the deck on the side?
Yes.
You're not gonna put a new one?
No, not with those steps and. And so right now, we currently have a non-conforming accessory structure, both the side steps and patio platform, and the patio that exists is non-conforming, so it'll be a benefit.
Okay, Dan?
Thank you.
Yes, so much for my comments.
Thank you.
Anyone, anyone else in the audience have any comments they want to make with respect to this application? I'll close the public portion of the meeting. We have two variances here, one of them 7 inches. The other one is significant, but if you've all visited the street, you know that, in my judgment at least, all the houses are lined up pretty much in a row. Anyone have anything they want to say? Any motions on this one?
I'll have approval.
Is there a second?
And that is subject to revised plans?
Yes. Mary McNabb?
Yes.
Greg Platter?
Yes.
Joyce Siegel?
Yes.
Wolfang Tor?
Yes.
Jessica Blatt?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Good luck with the project.
Do we off record? I think it's easier without the customer. It's easier without my client. Thank you for your input, thank you.
Okay, one more application, and I think that rather than take a break, if you guys are up to it, we'll just go right through. Now, you received tonight, board members, the comments, professional reports. Have, has the applicant seen those?
Yes, Mr. Steinberg. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Anthony Cerzillo, with the Law Offices of Levitt and Cerzillo in Milburn, on behalf of All Pro Health LLC, who seeks to occupy a part of the ground floor on 20 Main Street. The space is 1,614 square feet. The entire ground floor of 20 Main Street is currently vacant and last occupied by Milburn Bike Shop. The property is in the central business B4 zoning district. All Pro Health is owned only by Dr. Todd Schragen. He is affectionately called Dr. Todd, and I trust he will allow all board members to direct and speak with him accordingly. All Pro Health seeks to establish a wellness studio for an active clientele of all ages using a new paradigm concentrating on chiropractic sports care, progression movements, and yoga. The studio will offer retail sales of incidental items. There will be two employees on site, including Dr. Todd, for a total of 3. The proposed studio requires a use variance. We believe you will find special reasons that the site is particularly suitable for a wellness studio, and that the studio will have no substantial detriment to the community, and that it will not be substantially detrimental to your zoning ordinance and master plan. We further believe you'll find the studio beneficial to both the community and the well-being of children and adults. In addition to the use variance, All Pro Health seeks a variance from the requirements of a loading space and a parking space variance. The property contains no legal onsite parking spaces and no onsite loading space. The proposed wellness studio requires 10 parking spaces. And in my submission of the summary of variances, I had a typo in two places. I apologize for that. I'd like to hand out some revised summaries, if I may. The legal notices and the application papers present that we need compartment spaces, and that's what we're seeking. This corrects it.
You're talking about attachment E.
Summary E, Mr. Chairman.
The last item.
In addition to the use variance, loading space variance, and the parking variance, we require preliminary final major site plan approval, waivers of the environmental impact statement, and from the stormwater runoff provisions. We have received all five agency reports, review them with the client. I filed my proof of service in April. We have three witnesses, Mr. John Buckholz, architect, Dr. Todd, the owner, and Mr. Keller, in capacity of professional planner and engineer, if needed. Mr. Chairman, unless there are any questions, I'd like to call my first witness.
Go ahead.
Mr. Buckholz.
Yes, I do. John Buckholz, B-U-C-H-H-O-L-Z, 123 Columbia Turnpike, Forum Park, New Jersey, are my offices.
Please give the board the benefit of your professional and academic background in the field of architecture.
Licensed, actually, Bachelor of Architecture from Pratt in 1979, licensed in New Jersey in 1982. I'm licensed in New York, New Jersey, Connecticut, and Florida. Lead AP, professional, certified interior designer. I've appeared before this board, Milburn Planning Board numerous times, and boards throughout the state. Been qualified as an architect. All my licenses are intact. Thank you.
Mr. Buckholz, please describe the proposed floor plans to the board.
The, the drawing that I have on this board is listed as A1 dated March 4th, 2019. It's the same drawing that the board has tonight in our applications. What this illustrates is that this is Main Street on this side. This is Lot 1, where we park. Essex Street is down here, so this is the bike, this used to be the bike store in here. This was the area of the bike store that was for repairs. So this has been bifurcated. Something else will go in here. This is the space that we were talking about. There is an entry on the Main Street side, which is up several steps into a vestal, and it comes in this way. These windows sit up a little bit higher when you're, when you're here. So these are not really at grade level, you're coming up four steps when you come into this. So there's no ADA accessibility in this location. And this is basically township property here. So what we've, what's on the back of the building, and there is also parking back here. And when you come in through this driveway here, which we'll show you the area, and you come back in here, this space is along here, and there is an open area here, this wall is here. So there is a ramp that you can come up, all the way up to here, and you can get into this space. So this is a wellness center. So there will be people that either have injuries or looking to take care of stress and pain, and others that are coming in to be fitness and go through the motions that the doctor will testify to. So this provides us the ADA accessibility into the rear. This is well, you know, this is an easy access up here. This is where all the parking is, so therefore, we created this as the main entrance. Does this make sense? It's in the back, you're not driving down the road and saying, let me drop into the wellness center. So you're making an appointment, and you're becoming in here. The front area is the reception area from which you check in. If you have an appointment, you check in here. We'll talk about recovery zone in a little bit, and the doctor will go through this. There are two patient treatment rooms in which there are two doctors that do different things with the motion and with types of things that the doctors do. And they work in tandem. You progress through the offices here. There is a little bit of waiting area, and they come out here. The doctor, this area, and then the next part of your wellness conditioning is done in this area, in which you can, they'll, they'll do different things in different motions, different types of exercise, which the doctor will go through. And then you can move into the back studio, which again, between the two doctors, they'll do other things like yoga, it's a little bit more open, and it's a lot of one-on-one. It's all, it's all about specialty training and wellness that you go through here. It's a long and narrow space. It's, it's very difficult to use this space for retail. This, we, we believe this is kind of the right place for this. Wellness is the kind of thing that people are looking for. This is right in the downtown. Part of the thing is, is that we're not going to get handicapped people in this way, so we're coming in this way. We, we feel as though the retail sales, which they have some merchandise you can get, you're not really coming in here and buying anything for merchandise. You're really coming into the wellness center. So in using this, this doesn't really work well as a retail services for a store to come in, because this is back here. This, all these windows are sitting up higher off the street. You're really, you're elevated here somewhat in, in this area, and you're not really seeing into this space. This is actually kind of nice when people are doing fitness things. People will be able to see them from the street, and it's kind of nice to see that something's going on in here. But it's sort of like three parts, and, and recovery is, and the doctor will go through this. They have these boots that they put on, compression boots. After they've gone through this motion workout and things, they'll put these compression boots on, which do things to the legs, which the doctor can go through. And they actually sit here and wait for a while. It's part of the program they go through, so it's a specialty. So that, that occurs here, and then they go back out. So it's part of, they come into town, drop kids off, provide this service across here, come back out, and then go on their way. So this is roughly 1,609 square feet, this, this, this building, with the, with the entrance back here. We, you know, we, we see it as, because of narrowness, this is perfect for what they need. They don't need wide spaces, it's just smaller spaces, and they're doing small activities. This is not for, this is not 22 people like we did in Bobby Barnes with yoga. This is, this is meant to be a couple of people in here, and a couple of people in here, and that's the services they're giving. This is, this is not an all-out fitness. It's, it's a little bit of both. It blends the two of them together, and they'll go through this. Other than that, that's pretty much the architecture. It's the entrance in the back, it's a progression of uses, and then coming out.
Mr. Buckholz, I want you to focus on the fire department report, please. If you take a look at it, can you walk through the, there are five conditions with respect to the first four. Will the applicant comply?
Yes, and this, this is the typical fire department letter that we always.
The first four?
The first four, yes. This is typical that we get. We comply, we provide the CAD drawing. We, we provide the Knox box if it's not already on there, and we'll maintain the structure in the safe manner.
What is your opinion with respect to condition of the fire?
This is something that all fire departments are hoping that someone does. The building is not required to be sprinkled by code. It's a very small area. This is somewhat of a hardship for this applicant to put in a fire line. This is digging up the road, putting in a 4-inch fire line for quite a bit of money to sprinkle a portion of the space. If someone's going to do that, it would be the landlord. But to, for, for this, it is a, it is a, it's a 3B type construction. It has wood-framed floors with exterior walls that are masonry. His use doesn't create a, it's not a restaurant. It's not something that is conducive to creating a fire, so his use would not provide an additional detriment. So we don't, we, we don't think that this is necessary. And it does say strongly recommend. And in this case, this, this gentleman at this time would not be doing that.
Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions of Mr. Buckholz.
Any questions of Mr. Buckholz?
I have a question.
Sure.
Were you going to have any food or conference therapists or any of that?
If, if I could, there, there's nothing here and there that we were providing a sink or anything with. There is water that the doctor's going to be providing. There isn't sort of that sports bar that you might have.
Dr. Todd will test it.
And then one more question. And the window that's in the front?
Yes.
What are you going, what are we going to see there? I mean, you can see into the.
Yes.
Promises, I would imagine. But is there going to be any signage there? Is there going to be?
We, we, we've discussed that we are going to put the regular signage on the street that will indicate of this business. We, we will, we'll have a sign on the back door. All three of these have signage back here. There'll be just a sign to direct, you know, someone to in here. But the sign will conform. It'll be the 2-foot, by the distance that's permitted.
Are you able to walk in the door off of the street or?
Well, it, it actually, the door is used for the second floor tenants.
Oh, okay, so it'll be no access.
So the intention is not to have someone come in here, because if, if there's someone that's training in here, they could go through. There might be someone training here and training here. We would want them to come through here.
You don't need two means, are you going?
Well, it's still, it's still second means of the egress. It's, it, only because of its length. It's less than 50 people. So because it's less than 50 people, and they're required to have the second mean, it's just that its depth, so you will be able to get out if someone needed to get out.
So it will serve as like an emergency exit?
That's really all it is. It's just an emergency exit. If someone wanted to get out, they certainly could.
In any way, will the space contribute to like the street life? Will you be able to see people?
Well, that's, the doctor will talk about, you know, he'll have people exercising in here. Those that want to be seen can be seen, and those that don't want to be seen, you know, there'll be a curtain or something there.
Mr. See, I think it's the expectation that we want people to be seen. You have a testimony.
Is there anyone in the audience who's not here for this case? Are you here for this case? Pardon me?
I'm here for this case, yeah.
Okay, do you have any questions?
No.
Next.
Dr. Todd Schragen.
Hi, my name is... Yes. It's Todd Schragen, S.C.H.R.A.G.E.N. It's three eighty-one Walnut Street in Livingston.
Dr. Todd, are you the sole member and manager of All Pro Health?
Yes.
Tell the board, what are your educational and professional credentials?
So I got my Doctor of Chiropractic in two thousand and one, my state license in the same year. I have an extra thousand hours as a chiropractic sports physician from Levittown in New York. I also do what's called active release technique. I've worked with a lot of Ironman athletes. I've worked with a lot of different schools, implementing functional movement screens. Just different movement-based techniques.
Do you own a wellness studio?
Yes.
Where?
In Livingston.
And how long have you operated that?
Seventeen years.
If the board grants you the necessary approvals, will this be a second location, or will this be your only location?
This will take over for my, this will be my only location.
All right, describe to the board the type of studio you're proposing.
So the studio I want is to have an open environment. I would like to have, obviously, well, you could see on the draw, drawing, there's the recovery room. Patients will come in. I'm generally the senior clinician, former. I'll do what's called a movement exam on the patient as they come in. Then as we move into this area, I'll speak with the physical therapist or yoga therapist. They're usually only working with two people in a day, and it's one-on-one. And I'll say, hey, this is what I found with the, this person's back, but there's also issues with movement pattern in their shoulders and the neck. Could you take a look and tell me what you find in that? And then that would be an acute phase of, of treatment. As it becomes like subacute, and as the patients become more mobile and feel better, then they become, go from PT into yoga. So it's PT and yoga. So you're always working with two professionals in one session. The idea is to get them to graduate, do their movements correctly, and then move on, move on to other yoga studios in town, move on, do the martial arts in town. More, we're more of like a launching pad for other professions also. Like personal training studios, that's not what we're trying to do. It's a much different itch than I've seen, period.
All right, tell the board, how many employees will you have?
So it'll be three at most at one given time.
Yourself and who else?
Myself, a yoga therapist, myself, a physical therapist, and then I would like to have someone help front, help out, cleaning, et cetera.
All right, uh, what are the days and hours of your business?
So Monday, I would like to have six days open, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, seven to seven. Tuesday, Thursday, that's six hours. Mornings most likely on Tuesday and Thursday. I'd like to expand the hours on Tuesday and Thursday.
How do you schedule a session with you and your company?
So everything is, I'm looking to do things more progressively. Everything's done online. You're able to text the clinicians. That's generally how we have patients scheduled.
And are you dealing with groups of clients at a time, or is it more personalized?
Everything is one-on-one. It's, we're out of network, and we see the patient. Each clinician sees a patient on average for about forty-five minutes.
How long does a patient or client stay in your studio?
So total between like an hour, twenty minutes to even close to two hours, right around there.
And how, how are those, how's that time broken down into different components?
So you spend your initial visit, you come see me as the initial clinician, and then you do me in physical therapy or physical therapy, yoga therapy. And then you come over here into the recovery zone where I have the compression boots. I don't know if anyone's familiar with Armatac, but they're a, a very big company, and then recovery. Recovery's like a big part of our practice. I don't want reception, and I, right now, I don't, people walk in and get serviced. I don't want people sitting around. It's an eight to twelve person a day, Asia mode.
Can you tell the board if there was any particular reason why you chose twenty Main Street as your new location?
Well, it might sound hokey, but I was driving down, I used to ride out of High Gear with the Essex Chain gang and those guys. But I was down, I grew up in Baywood, and I was driving down here.
Your brother's in your gang.
Was that?
My brother's in your gang.
Oh, really? Oh, and so I was driving down here, and I looked to my left, and I swear to you, I was like, man, that would be an awesome spot. Because I've always wanted to have a wellness center. I had children, and I wasn't able, I did a home office, I wanted to take care of them. But when they became ten and fifteen, I was like, I really want to come out and go into a space, a downtown. I don't want to be smushed back in medical because I just don't feel like that fits on what I want to do. This has been a dream spot. I'm telling you, I looked to the left, and I was like, the white bricks, I was like, I can see All Pro Health in there. Not wishing High Gear anything negative, obviously. That's where I came to Milburn. I have a ton of people in Milburn now. I have a lot of patients from Milburn. I love the town. I love the idea that the Southbound Reservation is there. I have a lot of trail runners, you know, like have a little trail run coming, patrolling afterwards. I love to bring, bring some energy to, to the town. I love to work with Milburn, Mil, some teachers in there that I treat actually. I love fields and work with the high school. Give away the services, I give away, work with my favorite Kimberly Academy, and I go and work with their field and track, their women's basketball across country. And I want to be a part of the society, you know, community.
Dr. Todd, explain the components of the retail sales, what, what's being offered?
So the retail sales are generally bands. We do some supplements, some type of topical analgesics, some type of fish oil, that type of stuff, but not a ton of retail.
What about beverages?
Yeah, they have some ice water, possibly some minerals, supplemented water.
What type of refuse and trash will your business, or does your business generate?
It generates paper towels, there's no medical waste.
And where will you store the garbage? Well, is there a dumpster on site?
Yeah, there's a dumpster.
Do you have access to the dumpster?
Yes, I do.
And what type of products and merchandise do you envision being shipped to your business?
Bands, like small therabands, every, very small equipment that you could use, that you could take with you on a trip to do your exercises with.
How often are supplies and this type of merchandise being shipped to your location?
Maybe twice a week.
Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions.
Questions from board members. I have a question. What is the nature of the shipments into your proposed site?
Just like therabands, like equipment that you could take.
Like UPS, Federal Express?
Yeah, like, like, generally Amazon.
So it would be either delivered by the U.S. Post Office or UPS or something like that? You're not talking about tractor, trailer deliveries, or any sort of large vehicles?
Correct.
That's what you meant, correct?
No other questions from board members?
I have a question. How many people at one time in the aggregate?
Oh, at the most would be six, at the most. A couple people in the recovery room. You know, one or two in there, and then maybe one of them, five, five, six people.
Next witness.
Mr. Keller, please.
Yes, I do.
Qualifications?
I'm a licensed professional civil engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey. I was licensed as an engineer in nineteen eighty-nine, and as a planner in nineteen ninety. I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering with a concentration in Water Resources and Environmental Engineering, and I hold a Master's of Science in Architecture with a declared concentration in urban, this urban planning and design. From the, that's from the New Jersey Institute of Technology, where I was also an adjunct professor in both the graduate and undergraduate divisions for approximately eleven years. I have appeared before this board, as well as the planning board, approximately a hundred and ten other communities throughout the state of New Jersey as both planner and engineer, and my licenses are in good effect.
Is it qualified in both fields?
Yes.
Mr. Keller, what have you reviewed in the best of days with respect to your test performance?
We certainly, um... My firm did a site plan, we did a survey and site plan of the property. I've examined the property a number of times, and simulated the property, both back when I think it was the Milburn Press, as well as the Bike Shop. I've seen it grown over the years, and they've added the second-floor apartments. So certainly, being a, a resident of town since nineteen seventy-seven professionally, I'm very familiar with the site. I've also reviewed the master, the new master plan, as well as the zoning ordinance.
Could you describe the characteristics of the lot and the surrounding area?
A1. Describe it, Mr. Keller. Yep. This is a photo board containing three photos. One is an aerial photo. It is a photographed image at one is equal fifty, on which we have, we've actually shaded it slightly. And then we've highlighted public parking lots, which are outlined in yellow with the parking lot designations, as well as the property in question is outlined in orange. The building on the property is shown in both a green shading, as well as a mauve or sort of reddish color. The reddish color being the actual tenant space within the building. And the, it's divided between the, the parapractic side and then the fitness side is shown on there. And then to the lower right are two pictures. One is of twenty Main Street looking north from, from the street. That was taken on this past Friday. And photograph number two is a photo of the rear of the property, rear development looking west from the parking lot, also shot on last Friday. The property is a five thousand square foot, fifty-foot wide by one hundred foot deep property, about a hundred and sixteen feet north of the intersection of Essex Street and Main Street. It is surrounded on two sides by the public parking lot number one, which is in the, kind of in the heart of our downtown. That lot, in addition to having both resident parking and permanent employee parking, also contains eighty-six metered parking spaces actually on the pay station. There are eighty-six spaces, which are three-hour parking from nine AM to six PM, Monday through Saturday, and free on Sunday. Also, immediately to the east of that, just across the river, as we all know, is the parking deck, which contains approximately four hundred parking spaces overall in the deck. There are, actually, on the ground level are thirty-nine pay station metered spots. All of the spots in the downtown, listed as three-hour to two-hour limit. There's three-hour limit, nine AM to six PM, Monday through Saturdays, and free on Sundays and holidays. And I would point out that the, the upper levels, so there's another two hundred and fifty spaces that are free and available after six PM, and Saturdays and Sundays. So there is certainly a wealth of parking on the same block, and you're not too far from the public lot P five, which is off the lot from Town Hall that lines through the back of Dunkin' Donuts and out past Charlie Brown's. And there's also other public lots that are proximate to the area. The, as was indicated, this was the former site of the Milburn Bicycle Shop, which became High Gear Cyclery. They vacated probably about a year and a half, two years ago, and we've been working with Driscoll Properties to find, try to find tenants. The difficulty in this space is that the tenant space where Dr. Todd is proposing his business is about three feet higher than the other space, as Mr. Buckles indicated, and has a, has an additional ramp that goes up to it. So you've got the back area, which was the bicycle repair shop, and the front area, which was high-end street bikes. That area is separated from the, from the lower level. It's difficult to get any tenants to take the entire space. And so most of them have been interested only in the space that fronts on, with the windows that front onto the parking lot. We look at photograph number one, there's the window in question. And as, I don't think Dr. Todd testified to it, but I know in our discussions leading up to it, it was important to him that he leave that open, so people are doing yoga, they're doing exercise, there's activity within that. One of the disappointments I had in working on the evolved space is that they actually covered their windows on the one side, and it looks like, it looks like the building's under construction. And I was very carefully asked, Dr. Todd, about what, what his, what his feeling was of engaging in the street. And he feels that part of his business model is to, is to generate excitement, and you see that by people either doing yoga work or band work or flying yoga work. Within that space would be highlighted and help to, to highlight the street. As Mr. Buckles said, it is a somewhat difficult space because the, the window is high, it's elevated off the street because of higher elevation, and it's separated from the street because you have a door which is really, feels like it's primary to the second floor. And the entrance is actually in the back, as shown on photograph number two. The first two doors being, what was the primary bicycle shop. As you come up a ramp, the next spot up is access to the second-floor apartments. And you continue up the third part of the ramp, the second part of the ramp, and that's the door that would be the primary entrance into the facility. Again, not a great retail presence when you realize the only way to lease this out is by bifurcating the space. So this becomes the lesser space, where the less prime space. The one, the windows is the one that's gotten the most attention, mostly for either retail service or restaurant uses, but that one still has not leased. There is behind the property. We go to the drawing you have as part of your exhibit. Number one, it's the use variance preliminary major site plan application. And these such applications are also health. You can see that, again, divided, the two, the two, two areas is one that is primary chiropractic and one that is primarily health, fitness, and yoga to the rear, the vacant space being along the parking lot. There is actually an area where some cars are being backed there, but they're not allocated by lease. So you've kind of fit two or three spaces in there. There's a dumpster that kind of competes with that area. So we've indicated, for all intents and purposes, that there's no parking available. The reality is, there is the availability to get one car in there or possibly loading in there. But since it, there's really only one, one would be a conforming space, and it's not part of a lease, we indicated that our, our parking was zero on the property. The site data box shows that, as is typical with the downtown, we're fully compliant with the bulk requirements of the zone. We're allowed a hundred percent coverage, zero lot line. We are pretty much a hundred percent except with the planter, which I still consider to be elevated planter, still consider that to be pervious. So we're, for all intents and purposes, building coverage about eighty-three point two percent. Building maximum lot coverage is at a hundred percent. We're complying with the height. Where the existing, where the existing space and proposed space are deficient, though, is in parking. For the mix of uses, and by the way, there is a stair under the basement with a shortened basement section. The doctor has no plans on using the basement, storage only. In fact, he indicated he would be just as happy to cover the stair up and regain that space, but the landlord actually did not want him to. So there'd be no use of the basement. We did calculate it into our parking requirements for storage. So the, with the change of use from bicycle, from this space being bicycle, going to chiropractor and yoga slash fitness in that hybrid use, we go for an existing requirement of nine cars, and we go up to a requirement of ten cars. So with the change of tenancy, there is a net change in the parking requirement of one car. We need one additional parking space as a result of this use. The, the reason we're here and not before the planning board for a site plan is because this hybrid use is not permitted in the zone. Part of, we can arguably say that half the use would be permitted as a fitness studio, but medical office is not permitted actually in any part of the zone, and offices are only permitted on the second floor within the, in the zone. So we need to use variance for what we think is a unique hybrid blend of a specialized boutique health, motion, and fitness facility. We believe that the proposed use is actually consistent with trends in the downtown Milburn, as well as pretty much all of New Jersey, in that it is a unique specialized... in that, um, it is a unique specialized experiential use, um, that will augment the decreased use for, um, uh, the decreased demand for retail uses in the downtown. We think that, um, it's actually, uh, it'll bring a vibrant new, new use which will attract people to the downtown, that's what we're looking to do. And it's in a, in a somewhat compromised space, so we think it's most appropriate. Uh, with regard to the use variance, obviously, we need to, uh, present that it meets the, um, that there are positive criteria or special reasons in support of the variance, and we also need to me, uh, show that it meets the negative criteria. With regard to the special reasons, um, to establish special reasons, we need to show that we advance any of the sixteen purposes of zoning as defined in, uh, New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law forty fifty-five D-two. Um, those purposes that we advance are public health and general welfare, that's item A. Um, the contribution to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, and communities, that's item E. The provision of an appropriate location for recreational commercial use to meet the needs of the community and all New Jersey citizens. And finally, Section I, which is the, the promotion of a desirable visual environment, in that the building will be occupied. It kills me every time I drive ba, down there and I see that empty window staring at me. Um, it eliminates another vacant spot in the building that already has a vacant, um, high-profile tenant space immediately along the driveway. Um, case law also says that we need to further demonstrate that the site advances general welfare through demonstration that the site is particularly suited for the proposed use. And, um, and conversely, that the use is particularly cited, uh, suited for the site. Um, and I would point out, the caveat, as outlined in Cox and Koenig, um, uh, New Jersey Land Use, it does not, demonstrating that a site is particularly suitable for use does not require proof that there is no other potential for this location in the community, nor does it demand evidence that a permitted use couldn't exist here. Uh, rather, it's an inquiry into whether the, the property is particularly suited for the proposed use in spite of the fact that the use is not permitted in the zone. We believe that the site is particularly, uh, suited for proposed use. Um, first of all, it is a commercial use to be located in a commercial zone. Uh, one-on-one yoga and fitness is a permitted use. It is a low-intensity use with an unusual model, um, of having one doctor, one fitness therapist, and one yoga instructor. And Dr. Todd, am I correct in that there'll only be two of those on-site at any one point, or will all three be on-site occasionally?
Occasionally, all three.
But for the, the primary model is that you'll have two people, whether it's
Yoga and the, the doctor, or it's the, uh, physical fitness movement, or the doctor, or the yoga and the physical fitness together, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, so it is a low-intensity, um, model proposed here. The building configuration is actually appropriate for this use as well. It is a small, thin, narrow use at that elevation, separated from the, the primary bulk of the, of the building. The building, um, the proposed tenants' areas, John has sixteen oh-nine, I have sixteen fourteen, I think I'm right. Um, but, uh, of the, uh, of the forty-one hundred and sixty square feet, so there's twenty-five hundred and fifty square feet that is, um, the lower level, and this upper thin slot is sixteen hundred and fourteen, uh, square feet. That small space, um, is really appropriate for a boutique use like this, and what's u, what's unusual is that it actually also has tall ceilings because it's an old downtown building. So, it's unique in that even though it is a narrow slot, it is still actually open an area and supports the, uh, the, the health imperatives, um, and, uh, and type of operations the doctor plans to, uh, to provide. These type of spaces are not found in the CMO zone where medical uses are permitted. They tend to be much larger warehouse buildings, and they're not divided into small spaces as small as this, as small as sixteen hundred square feet. Also, what was critical in the location of this is that it is within walking distance of the medical, middle school and high school, in that students can come in after, after school or sports, and equally importantly, Dr. Todd can either run over or hop on his bicycle and ride up to the high school or the middle school to provide augmented services to the sports teams, such as he does with Mon, Moncler Kimberly and has done in Livingston. Um, also, the proximity to Taylor Park and South Mountain Reservation to foster partnering with municipal, the municipality for special events. He does a lot of, like, we're having a fair this weekend, he does a lot of downtown fairs to help people understand range of motion, how they can improve themselves, how they can stay athletic, um, not just be athletes when they're young, but actually stay athletic into their aging years. I think he's got his eye on me. It is a, uh, it is a low-intensity personalized, these low-intensity personalized sessions, uh, will have less impact on parking than many of the permitted uses in the zone, such as, uh, personal service or restaurants. So, we think the use is actually permit, is, is particularly suited to the proposed site. Um, and as John had indicated, this site is not optimal for, for many of the permitted uses due to the, its interior location away from the, uh, uh, away from the, the primary windows on the south side, um, due to its three-foot elevation above the street and the adjoining, uh, internal, um, tenant space and its limited visibility. The, um, the C variances are for the parking and loading space. Generally, these are considered to be, um, the positive criteria is subsumed within the variance, but obviously, whenever you have in the downtown, you have a building that is permitted to be fully one-hundred percent occupied on the site, there's no room for parking, um, or loading spaces. Loading space one is required, we have none, um, so it's a deficiency of one, and a change in deficiency from the current use, there's no change. As indicated, ten spaces are required, it's a deficiency of ten, and the change over the current use is one space. I would point out, under Section six oh seven point four, uh, under the section on waiver of parking requirements, it states that in the use, if the use of any existing premises is changed, in such a way as to increase the minimum number of required off-street parking spaces in accordance with the standards as set forth herein, the applicant shall be required to purchase municipal parking permits of such increased number of off-street parking spaces. No on-street parking is actually, um, that no off-street parking is provided is typical, um, in our downtown, um, where we favor the use of well-located perimeter public parking areas, um, as was indicated under A-one. I don't think you're gonna find a space that has better proximity to a well-located public parking spot. Um, with regard to the negative criteria, obviously, it's two prongs. One is that there's no substantial detriment to the public good, and the second is there's no substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the master plan and zoning ordinance. We think there is no substantial detriment to the public good. The parking deficiency is mitigated by its proximity to public parking, and the impact on parking is minimized by the nature of the use, and a loading space is certainly not required based upon the applicant's testimony. Um, with regard to the, um, any detriment to the character of the neighborhood, this use is generally consistent with the overall commercial uses, uh, commercial and fitness uses otherwise permitted in the B-four zone, and it eliminates another vacancy in the downtown. Um, with regard to the master plan and zoning ordinance, the primary goals and objectives of the two thousand and eighteen, uh, reexamination update on page forty-three, goal number one is to encourage appropriate land uses that will promote the character of the township as a small suburb of the highest quality, and within that, under objective one point oh four, is to provide areas for recreation to serve the need of all age groups, including indoor and outdoor facilities, as well as active and passive recreational opportunities. While this does not, this does provide an internal space for, for recreational activities and health, it actually also fosters, um, people's ability to, to stay in those sports off-site. So, when they get done with their treatments, when they get an injury healed, they can go back out and run through the reservation. The, um, master plan recommendations in the B-four zone on page fifty-four, um, uh, among them is to examine the permitted uses in order to permit more experiential-type commercial uses, and to consider permitting, uh, office uses, including shared office uses on the ground floor, provided the same requirements for active storefronts are met. This, this applicant intends to keep an active storefront through that activity that'll be seen through that, so when you're stopped at that light and you're looking over, you're gonna see somebody working out in that space. The, um, we believe that it is not inconsistent with the master plan. Obviously, the Medici case says that because we have a use variance, we have an enhanced quality of proof, and that is that we have to reconcile the omission of the proposed use from those permitted in the zoning ordinance. And the most often, uh, per, the most often reason cited for such an omission is that the use is either too new to have been contemplated, or that it is, um, it's a previously con, considered use that has evolved, um, to a degree that was not contemplated. And while we did recently have a master plan update, um, that reexamination recommends examining more uses in the B-four, but it stops short of suggesting actual new uses. We do believe that, um, this is a unique blend, a hybrid of wellness, um, combined with chiropractic supervision, uh, personal training, and yoga that is not something that I would have thought of, but the doctor has been providing with success for seventeen years and is looking to bring that to our community. We think it does reflect a new paradigm in integrated fitness and wellness to support the active lifestyles of the residents of Milburn and, and, and athletes of Milburn of all ages. We do think that it is an, an exciting opportunity for the community, um, and as well as a, an exciting opportunity for the merchants in the downtown to repopulate our downtown. We think it meets the burden of proof for both the D and the C variances, and that we hope that you'll approve it.
Mr. Keller?
Mr. Keller, could you just, um, address the EIS waiver, which is reflected in, um, the zoning officer's report?
Yeah, this would, I guess, to my knowledge, this would be the third time we're requesting an EIS waiver on this site. It is a fully developed site, there are no environmentally sensitive, uh, areas on the property, although I believe that the public lot is still undergoing environmental, environmental remediation through some drive, through some monitoring wells, but this site has no, um, has no areas of concern. There's, uh, as I said, there, there's no change, um, in the way the property will be used. There'll be no added impact to the sanitary sewer system, uh, there's really no increased amount of runoff. There's really no, no possible environmental impacts as a, as a function of this being leased to this user.
Thank you.
I have one question. I'm looking at, um, your photo board, and in the lower right-hand corner, which I guess is marked what, A-one?
A-one.
In the lower right-hand corner of the board is the picture of the rear
Correct.
of the two properties side by side, and I'm seeing five, six cars parked there. Was it your testimony that this lease does not provide any specific parking spaces? Are those five spaces part of the municipal lot?
Yeah, they are. Those are these spaces right, I, uh, we shaded it so that, um, the sun is, when, uh, when the photo's so bright, you can't see the shade in our other line work, but those spaces, those cars are parked in these spaces right here. Those are all off-site, I go back to our drawing, um, our property line is this heavy line here. Those spaces are facing us, those are not part of our property. So, the area where I indicated there was potential for parking, is that a park, a car can turn in between the bollards and the elevated, um, ramp system. There is enough room for one, two, even three cars to park in there, but they're not legal spaces, so we do indicate them. But there is a, there's a gap between, but right in front of these, these seven or eight cars, there are bollards to prevent these cars from driving onto the subject property, and there's an area of at least ten feet in there where, um, a vehicle, the dumpster is actually located out in this area, um, along the Westerly side of that little alley that's created between the bollards and the building, but there is no parking on that side.
Any other questions of this witness? Mr. Medici would be very happy with you.
That makes me happy.
Any other witnesses? Is there anyone in the audience who has either questions or comments? Come forward, give your name and address, please.
Hi there, my name is Joanna Parker Lentz, spelled P-A-R. Uh, it's a comment.
Comment?
Yes, I do. I do. Joanna Parker Lentz, J-O-A-N-N-A, P-A-R-K-E-R dash L-E-N-T-Z. I live at sixteen Ridge Terrace in Short Hills. Um, I'm a resident of Short Hills for over twenty years, I'm a real estate agent, I'm an avid volunteer. You guys may know me from Rocktoberfest, um, I definitely take part in a lot of civic association things as well. And I feel like the reason why I'm here, I feel like everyone's stated their qualifications, um, my qualifications as a patient of Dr. Todd's is I'm a nine-time, nine-time marathon runner that has caused a lot of strain on my hips, other parts of my body. My son is an athlete for the last four years at the varsity level at the high school, and we were introduced to Dr. Todd by a friend of mine who is a triathlete. And while I was attending, um, a couple of months sessions with Dr. Todd, eventually, his point was to graduate me from him. He said, "I don't want you to come see me anymore, I want you back on the trails and do what you do." He told my son, "I want you to not come back to see me every single year, I wanna teach you the things that I'm, I'm gonna teach you so that you can go on." And he met him freshman year, my son's a junior, he's never gone back to Dr. Todd because he taught him how to roll, he taught him how to do stretches. My son still does those stretches because he was taught by a cool young doctor how to do these things. And so, I just wanna speak to the fact that not only am I speaking as a patient, but I'm speaking as a resident who would love to see this practice come here because I do need tune-ups, unlike my son, and I would like to be back on, on the, uh, trails. And I'm still working my way back, so I'd love to not drive to Livingston, I'd love to walk down from my house to the location. I would like my son, when he needs a tune-up, to walk from the high school and not have to park anywhere. So, I think it's a really, really great benefit to our town, I hate seeing the vacancies around town. So, I'm here to su, to support Dr. Todd and this whole venture. Um, I'm also his Realtor, his friend, and his client, so I think, hurrah, all pro health.
Anyone else? Let the record show there is no, uh, no one else in the audience other than the applicant and the applicant's witnesses and attorney. I'll, uh, close the public portion of the meeting. Board members, comments, discussion?
I will speak up, as I have before, for these applications that have come to the downtown that are hybrids and innovative and, in fact, the, the kind of, um, folks that are going to, um, repopulate the retail area of Milburn. And so, I'm enthusiastically supporting the application.
Anyone else?
Couldn't have said it better than Mary.
I will support it on the condition that he figures out how to get me around the tennis court. Better than I can get around today. Is there a motion?
How do we wanna do this?
Yeah, we should, yeah, we should do the use variance first.
I guess the town requested to buy the permits, correct, for the
Right.
Right.
I thought we heard three employees.
Yes.
So, and then I think it's part of this, part of the
Yes.
stipulation to pur, purchase parking permits, business permits.
All right, let's do the, uh, use variance first. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Mary McThatt, yes. Joyce Eagle?
Yes.
Paul Fenton Torres?
Yes.
Jessica Platt?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. All right, now, the, um, other variances and the, and the waiver of the IAS.
It would be, um, preliminary and final major site plan approval. And it will be the loading space variance and the parking variance for ten spaces.
With the requirement of
Subject to the condition that the applicant purchase
Three of the, uh, commercial parking permits.
Is there a motion?
I so moved.
Second? Second?
Second.
Mary McThatt?
Yes.
Kate Clatter?
Yes.
Joyce Eagle?
Yes.
Paul Fenton Torres?
Yes.
Jessica Platt?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Good luck. Is there anyone in the audience who has any matters to bring before the zoning board of adjustment that are not on the agenda?
I'll just, um, alert the full board that, um, in the Beinrad versus Miller matter, Mr. Beinrad has filed a petition for cert petition to the New Jersey Supreme Court on the application that the appellate division upheld the board's two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and sixteen decisions. I'll keep you further informed.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
I, I mean, I'm not gonna be able to be at the next meeting, I'm not gonna be able to next meeting, May sixth.
Now, who else is, is there anyone else on May sixth?
I have a tendency to put that on my calendar, so I'll do it right now.
You're not gonna be?